You're in activity. I'm in your monthly activity.
And when would you be starting to schedule the interviews?
Well-
That's the only timeframe that I just need, that little bit of time to verify information.
I don't think realistically we can interview until probably after our January meeting.
February.
February meeting, which would be the seventh and eighth, sixth and seventh?
Seventh and eighth.
Seventh and eighth.
Is that enough time?
And for me, yes.
How much, yeah, how much time do you need to put it together? Three, four days, five?
And I can, I can make all that happen. That part's not a problem. I would suggest when the letter goes out that you tell them when the interviews will be scheduled so they can plan their life accordingly if, if there's shift, if there's seven guys coming in, if they do have a road crew, if there's a snow, you know, kind of say, you know, we want the deadline is the 27th and we will tentatively schedule the interviews at 8:00 or the 10:00 from 9:00 to 4:00 or something so they could figure out how they're going to all-
And subject to change based on work schedules and road emergencies.
And that way everybody would, they wouldn't be stunned when, oh.
It would not, it would be totally inappropriate to say, I can't interview you because you're working during the time where interviewing, that we won't do.
On there, but, but for my part, it's, it should be easy.
Okay.
And if you'll send me that as well so I know the times, then yes, I'll be good.
So we're gonna do the interviews when? The 10th? Ninth? Brent, what do you suggest?
Of, of mine right now, I'm going to say that we have everyone that we're going to have. I, I think, I believe so. Everyone that's called me has came and picked out with the exception of one, and that was the one that came this way.
That's a Friday, Friday the 10th.
So if we do this on Friday the 10th and then we have our next meeting that next Wednesday in Wetmore?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
No, the 21st in Wetmore.
21st, yeah.
So we're still 11 days out.
Yeah. So I have a question. Is the interview session like, is it a meeting and then you go into executive session for the interviews and then you come out and?
What did we do when we hired Veteran Service Officer?
I posted, I would, I would just post it as a meeting on the door so you weren't meeting alone. But the door was closed because it was interviews and then we posted the interview, that we had interviews going on.
Counselor, we have to go into executive session for that then, right?
It should be an executive session, yes.
And then we go into executive session for the interviews?
And we can schedule like the afternoon after the regular meeting, we can have executive session in the afternoon if you want to do it that way.
You mean on the, on the, um, the 7th or, or the 8th?
What day? 7th or 8th?
Now, do we want to interview everybody that applied or do we want to interview our top applicants?
Well, and it's, you may-
Maybe the workshop to-
Yeah, but a workshop is open to the public.
Right, so then it's an executive session.
It's an executive session.
Ordinarily, I make copies of all of it besides their private information and make it available to you to give me your top choices and you can just pick them up at my office or use them there.
That'd be good.
And that way you can take them home and read through and, and say, you know, three of the six, all six, and put them in order and then if all, and then you bring the years and it has your 1, 2, 3, your, your 4 and the same and then we pick from there.
Is that an executive session though? The pick is an executive session?
Actually, you discuss it and then you come out and vote on it formally on the record, but you can kind of discuss and have an informal understanding of what your preferences are, but you need to make your vote in an open session, yes.
Does Board of County Commissioners effectively acting as a search and screen committee?
Yes.
So we each evaluate those six applications on 1 through 6.
And they are all six really strong?
And then we'll come through there and, and, I'm trying to say- Bob was ranked 1 on this list and I was ranked 5 over here and I was ranked 3 over here. That means that's 5 and 3, that's 9 points.
Right, and I, I-
We go across and add up and then whoever, those 3 least number of points would be the 3 that we would interview unless we decide we want to interview more. Do you see where I'm going with that? Kind of like a call score.
Usually ordinarily, that would, it's never a choice. You, I have never had it where it was anything but the, the strong 3 or 4 and it was always unanimous. Maybe 1 and 2 were swapped and 3 and 4, but it's always been really, they just really seem to, to stand out.
Okay.
And that's how we did it also when we hired Cindy.
Okay. I'm just looking at the time.
I know.
So we have about 10 minutes.
So is that-
That's it.
Okay, I, we'll recess. We're done voting, right?
Yep.
Okay, I will recess the Board of County Commissioners, uh, well, yeah, recess the Board of County Commissioners at 1:35 PM and I-
To, uh, legal advice.
I will second that motion citing the CRS 24-6402 regarding 4-B.
Okay. Commissioner Prince has made a motion and seconded by Commissioner Hood to go into executive session citing Colorado statutes 24-6402 regarding legal advice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we will now go into- At, at this time, I will reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting on January the 20th, 2017. Commissioner Prince made a motion seconded by Commissioner Hood to go into, uh, go into his executive session regarding CSR 24-16402 and then Commissioner Prince made a motion seconded by Commissioner Hood to go back into regular session. I attest that I am the chairman of the Custer County Board of Commissioners and confirm that discussion remained on topic, that no matters were adopted and no actions or decisions were made. Counselor?
That's a correct statement and I can state for the record, we did discuss a, an email demand for a response to certain questions from the Wet Mountain Tribune. We discussed that. No decisions were made in executive session and we stayed on topic the entire time.
Is there other business to come to force at this time?
Well, we need to. Now, okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion that the response to the inquiry by the Wet Mountain Tribune prepared by Clint Smith be approved and that this board authorizes Mr. Smith to go ahead and send that response on our behalf.
Please, your second?
I would just like to add that we stay within the requested time constraints according to that email. And I would make a, a second.
Dean? Do you agree as in the-
I think it's fine. Yes, I accept that.
Motion's been made and seconded to send that to the Tribune in response to the inquiry. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, I'll give this right now to Brenda with changes in it and you can get it out today.
And at this time, we do have a couple of items left for signature. I recognize we have some time constraints. Would you like to come back, Commissioner Prince, and sign these maybe tomorrow or Monday?
That, I, I'll tell you, I'll sign them right now.
Well, Monday will be fine if you want to.
It'll be okay. Let me do them now and I'll get it, get them done if that's okay. Not that many of them.
I won't, I won't be able to get them out into the mail until Monday probably anyway.
I'll come back Monday and sign them then.
Would you like to sign them?
Yep.
At this time, I will adjourn the Board of County Commissioners and we will finish signing the correspondence. Sufficiency, Counselor? Motion, meeting adjourned at 1:50 PM. Thank you. Stand please for flagrant allegiance with your latest tradition.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Calling this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on Friday, January 20th, 2017 reflect that we started at 9:02. The, would the clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes. Chairperson Katnick?
Here.
Commissioner Prince?
Here.
Commissioner Hood? County Attorney Clint Smith?
Present.
Would the audience please identify themselves?
Then you need to identify yourself.
Oh, Deputy Clerk Lori Bistado?
Okay.
Dallas Anderson, Airport Advisory Board.
Jackie Hobbie, zoning director.
Eric Foster, Silver Cliff.
Danny Biddinger, West Cliff.
Wayne Yuen, West Cliff.
Thank you. We have minutes on January the 10th as the board had an opportunity to review these minutes.
I have.
I, I have also.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as submitted?
No, I, I move that we accept the minutes from the prior meeting of-
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
The move is accepted. We accept the minutes of meeting on January 10th, 2017. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we move into public comments. I ask that again, we have a very small crowd this morning, but sometimes it's difficult to identify who's bringing up which topics. So as you have a comment, I would like to introduce yourself and, and if the comments become lengthy, we will move them on to the next meeting and have them as an agenda item. Do we have any comments from the public at this time? Okay, I have, apparently we have no comments.
I just want to point out, agenda.
Oh, we need to, are there any amendments to the agenda? One amendment that I'm going to make is not actually an amendment, it's just a moving, but we're gonna move the, the executive session from where it's located after attorney items down to the end of the meeting. And we will also be, be signing a, a number of letters. These are all just the letters of appointment to the various committees. And we'll be doing that towards the end of the meeting. Are there any other amendments to the agenda?
I believe we are also gonna move the executive session to the end of the agenda.
Didn't I just say that?
Did you? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, apologize.
I'm sorry. Anything else? Okay, the agenda will, is approved as amended. Attorney, Commissioner items, do either of you have some comments you'd like to make?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I won't speak for Jay, but last week we had our commissioners' orientation in Denver with CCI and I found that to be great information and a resource for our commissioners and actually our entire county with what was presented. And I thought it was great. Three, two and a half days of crammed information and some of us wonder what the heck did we get into? But it was a nice meeting. There are 54 new commissioners that have come on board and we got to meet most of them. So that was really good. I just want to state that I did meet with our tourism board yesterday, on Wednesday. Also, the IT Director Chuck and, on Wednesday, and 9/11 Committee. I have asked Chuck to get 3 bids on laptops for the commissioners and the resource of that is coming from my salary with my first paycheck. So I am donating back, for the record, my salary through the year and I will pick what I feel is gonna be best for the county through that process. So Chuck is on board going through that process. I would also like to understand when we get emails from citizens, what the protocol is for response of the citizens because some of these come to all 3 of us, some of them come to us individually. So I, the one thing we didn't talk about in CCI was really communicating with our citizens. That was not a topic of discussion. So I guess I'd like to hear maybe from Clint because some of the topics could get very heated. Is there a protocol for commissioners to respond to citizens?
I think it all has to be your individual choice based on the communication you got. The one that you shared with me yesterday and asked for my opinion, I felt that was somebody venting more than really wanting to talk about it or have an explanation as to why you made a particular decision. So I suggest maybe you not respond. I didn't think that person really was even asking for a response, but it's, it's gonna have to be done on a sort of a case-by-case basis whether you get something, whether you're going to respond. But there's not any particular protocol. You all have to decide. Jay?
Clint, I think it's important to note that if it's a particular issue and the 3 of us respond or if one of us responds, it's covered by the Open Records Act. So we have to be very careful on how we respond. One person can't speak for the board and if we speak for the board, the 3 of us discuss this and it, and it's, it's a meeting and it has to be posted and all the protocols followed. So I, I agree with you, Clint. We need to be very, very careful.
Right, and if it's, if you each get it individually and respond individually without communicating with one another, how you're gonna respond, that's, that doesn't fall under the open, open meeting law, but there also may be inconsistent responses, that explanation. So it's, it is something you have to be careful about. But it's, there isn't any specific protocol for it. That's just part of having to use your best judgment as a commissioner.
Should you be copied?
Not necessarily. If it's something that you want my input on, feel free to send it to me, but you're gonna be contacted by your constituents constantly and I don't need to see every communication. I would just suggest you save all of the messages that you get, whether you respond or not. But if it's something asking why did the board decide something, you probably need to be careful trying to explain, you know, the reasoning of the entire board. You can just state that it was discussed on the public, or during a public meeting for any decision that was made.
Would it be proper protocol to invite them to the next meeting to get on the agenda?
You can certainly invite them to come in for public comment. I mean, if it's something that is a matter of substance rather than just somebody expressing displeasure toward you generally, but you can certainly explain they have a right to request to be on the agenda to discuss whatever the issue is.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is there was an email directed to all 3 of us with regard to changing the rule on fire ban. So I just don't, I'm not sure about the processes.
If you want to deal with it, it's something we probably should put on the agenda and have the sheriff present for them.
For, for the information, at a prior meeting, we talked about the fire ban and Shannon asked us on what we wanted to do and we said, well, as far as we're concerned, that's up to you. And he said, well, we just won't enforce it for the last 2 weeks, but it has expired.
Okay.
So it's, the fire ban has been lifted. But up until, really until this snow, we still had a reasonable fire risk. Even though we'd had some light snow, but with all the wind and stuff we'd had, there was still a possibility in the wrong place. Would you, just, just a second. If I, let me interrupt just a sec. With those of you who come in late, would you please identify yourselves for the, for the record, please?
John Johnston, West Cliff.
Pat Bailey, West Cliff.
Paul Stager, West Cliff.
Brent Brown.
Alan Butler with the airport.
Okay, now go ahead, John.
I'm sorry. Will that be published, the fire ban being lifted?
It can be. It's not a big, I mean, it was published that we had lifted it. I mean, that we, when we put it into place, I would think that that would be the responsibility of the newspapers as part of the county news, but it's something that, pardon me?
Did you put it on the county website?
Uh, yes, and, and also we, we could notify them, but again, this is something that's very unusual. This is the second, I think, fire ban that we've had since I've been here.
It's just people don't know.
I think, Commissioner, if I may, I think John's point is well taken. If you looked at the website recently, it did have a banner on the top that said, "We're in a fire ban." And I think if we would ask whoever maintains that, Chuck, to make those changes once you try it.
It's already off, so.
Okay, good.
That it's off?
Okay, sounds like John, I think your point is well taken.
I think, and this is stuff that Brenda kind of helps us keep up with.
Absolutely agree.
Well, I'm referencing an email from Mr. John Stinecki from 119 that came to all of us requesting that we look at the rules on it.
And did you get the second one from him? I did, where he said, oh, I realize it's been lifted.
Okay.
And, and I think in the future that if someone does wish to change any rules that are in place, they need to address us at a meeting and then we could take it under advisement and make the decision if it's appropriate.
Anything else?
I would like to just make a request. I know that we have established our meeting schedule and I'm just asking that maybe one of the first 2 days of the month, either the afternoon or morning, however you want to look at it, be set aside for workshops that are needed.
I'm gonna make sense. I'm okay with it.
I think that's fine.
Do we need to-
I don't think it's a motion. I don't think it's a resolution. I think it's just-
No, we just established workshops as we need them and we'll, we'll take, as a, as a point when we're, we're having our, our meetings and we have to schedule this. If we need to schedule a workshop, we have to schedule and publish it and it can be done only after we publish our meeting notice.
Okay, well, in that case, I would like to request a workshop because we were never able to meet with Chuck, IT Director. I think it's important that we have that workshop with him. And also, I would like to schedule a workshop with our extension agent superiors at CSU and 4-H Foundation.
Good spot. I don't have any problems with that. Let's coordinate a time between the 3 of us that works and then we'll publish it and post it as per the law.
We'll, we'll have to contact them.
I suggest we have to, first of all, I appreciate Donnie wanting to set it on a specific date, but this may not work for their schedule, so we may have to schedule workshops at times.
Around their schedule. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Could I have Commissioner Prince and Commissioner Hood speak up a little bit? I keep getting an audio low level when you speak.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
Basically, what I've done, I treat my emails just like a phone call. If someone calls me, we will visit about an issue. I don't record the phone call. I consider that as a communication. An email is open to public records, which a phone call, if you made a record of it, if you kept notes, I suspect under public records, they could also probably subpoena those. I think we respond on an individual basis and most of the time, if it's something that's an issue, ask them to come to the meeting. A lot of times, people just, just want to say, well, I got a problem here. My, you know, this isn't working or that or whatever. And I like to say, well, we understand that. Let me check into it further and we'll see what we can do. And then I'll get back with them with what the action was or ask them to come to the meeting. I consider it as a, not as a, an unfriendly communication. I consider it as a communication from a voter to me and I take it kind of personal that I have a responsibility to respond in some manner. Okay, any other items for you? Jay?
I, I met, I met with the airport board. I met with recycling. I've been in contact with Dark Skies. There was a gentleman at the meeting that you and I discussed in Loray County who's very interested in becoming Dark Skies compliant, Mr. Brad Byrne, and he, I've been in contact. So I've been real busy. I met with a citizen in my office yesterday who had some major concerns. I asked him to please voice those, if he had those at an open meeting, so that they can be discussed. He said he wasn't inclined to do that. I said, well, there really isn't a whole lot that I can do as an individual. This is a board that handles decision-making. So hopefully he'll come and talk to us and that'll get resolved, his issues. And I think some of them were probably pretty valid, but I feel he needs to bring them forward. Other than that, I've been real busy meeting with our staff and with constituents and my different committees and just staying busy.
Okay, first of all, I think as a general rule, when I receive a communication, whether it's positive or negative, I try to respond in a friendly manner. Sometimes we forget we're elected by them. They're our bosses. And, and most usually, it's not a big deal. People like to be heard. I had a phone call yesterday from a lady that was concerned about the cell phone service. She called me about 8 o'clock last night and we spent probably an hour on the phone. I explained to her what we were doing. We got done. I said, well, you can come to the meeting if you'd like to. She said, no, you answer my questions. But you get those kind of things.
Sure.
And if you don't know the answer, say you don't know it. Don't guess. And be careful you don't put your, your, your colleagues in a, in a, you, you don't box them into a corner with remarks that you made. My activities, first of all, last Friday, I went to the sheriff's office award banquet. It was extremely well done. A lot of our law enforcement personnel received special recognitions, various levels of commendation. And helped me out Sheriff Byerly in the back there, but we gave, and I won't go throwing it, but you had 3 Medal of Honor merit, what'd you call that, for?
Valor.
Medal of Valor. One went to Mike Halpin and one went to-
Brandon Shaw.
Shaw, and the third one was?
To Chris Barnes.
Pardon me?
To Chris Barnes.
To Chris Barnes. And they're for actions that they performed during the junkman's fire. Tuesday, we had a meeting of the Custer Emergency Services. It was a very productive meeting. We have a lot of things we need to be talking about. A lot of things we need to be working on. We've got some communications things we're working on and part of them tied into the E911, the Emergency 911 meeting, which we had on Wednesday. And also attended that meeting. We met about an hour and a half. We had almost everybody there. We addressed some issues, one of them being the financial reporting of the E911. I think we made some real progress there. I think we're gonna have a, an opportunity to have those reports and they do have a, by statute, they do have a report that's due, a public report that's due 60 days after the, after the New Year and I think they'll have that done for us. And that basically, I guess, is what it's been. No other, no other activities, a few phone calls. The one, one issue, I guess, that we had, which I don't consider an issue, we had a school bus get stuck on Monday over on Oak Creek Grade. And this is a somewhat of a, as many of you realize, a little bit different snowstorm because it was warm. It melted and then it froze with ice underneath it. So we even know there were only a couple, 3 inches of snow on the, on the surface. In some places, it was glare ice underneath. And road and bridge, as through yesterday, were still out plowing and breaking ice and sanding and so forth. I do know we had a few people in the county that were, that got stuck. But at the same time, Roger Squire responded with the motor grader. I went out to the scene and pulled the bus to the top of the hill. He finished plowing the area and the situation made clear. And I believe that's all I have for attorney items. At this time, we'll move into, we're gonna move the, excuse the director of commission items. We now have attorney items.
I prepared a confidential memo to the 3 of you in response to your request for some legal advice regarding the open meetings law. And if there is additional discussion about that, I'd say we could talk about that during the executive session because that is, does fall within the category of confidential legal advice. I also prepared a memo to you regarding the appointments to the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Adjustments. My understanding, even though it's on the agenda today, we were gonna kick that over until the last day of the month since Vic Barnes couldn't be here. But I did give you a memo on that and some information I had. And then there's the other matter we'll be discussing in executive session that I worked on. And finally, there's, I, late last year, I prepared- And finally, there's, late last year, I prepared a first draft, a very rough first draft of a marijuana ordinance, and I would like to schedule a workshop on that. We need the sheriff present, we need Jackie Hobbie present, and I'd like to sit down when we have an opportunity and talk about that, and so I can, and some of the things that are in there right now are inconsistent, the way I drafted it, sort of choosing one or the other, but I would like to get going forward on that. And I think that's all I have right now under attorney items.
Okay. Do any of us have anything this time? Thank you very much. The executive session, when we get to it, will be personnel items. We have some open positions, we need to work on some position descriptions, and some other items that relate to personnel, and then we will also have, as he indicated, some legal advice, but we'll repeat that when we go into the executive session.
Excuse me, and when we do that, the legal advice part is not recorded. The other part would be recorded, so we're going to need to do it twice, go into executive session, two separate times.
Let's move into new and old business. First item is Custer County Corps of Chaplains, Emergency Responding Chaplains with Eric Foster. Eric, would you join us, please?
Welcome to see you. Well, to start off, I'm excited to be here with you. We've all spoken individually at different times, and I've sent information to your administrative assistant about the program. I think it pretty much speaks for itself unless you have some confusion or questions on it, which I'd be glad to answer as best I can. The main thing that, the stress situation that causes so many problems with our healthcare professionals and the emergency service, PTS, and the D at the end, dysfunction disorder and death, a very serious thing that goes on in emergency service. When I say emergency service, I'm talking about military as well, because they are emergency responders around the world. It's more than just our local fire, police, ambulance, and then you go into the clinic. And one thing that I did not include in the report, that I understand is probably very easy to get, there is an alarming suicide rate amongst doctors. We can probably check on nurses, too, because of the stress that they go under when people come in. They're just like everybody else. And the organization is primarily to serve those who serve us. That's the quote that came to my mind. And it's not just about emergency service, that's the primary focus of this organization. Secondary is for the general public. It's also a, when it comes to general public, it's a, it's a big help to the sheriff's department when somebody has lost a loved one in the middle of the night. A chaplain, hopefully, will be on duty to respond to that, and then they can relieve the deputy or deputies that are at scene, so they can do their real work of other issues as well, when we can have a chaplain on scene to be with the person who's going through a stress situation, obviously. And that's pretty much it. What I'm asking with the review of the documents that I've given you is only one basic thing, is it was suggested by me, by a good friend, to have this organization placed in the county charter, to make it official, recognize organization. And then we want to pursue a couple of items, which has, I would not ask you guys for this, because I want this organization to stand on its own two feet, so to speak. I don't want to ask for any money from you folks or the taxpayers. I'll let the Lord supply that through people's donations and help. But we would like to get it in the charter to be fully recognized, and we've got to work on our 501(c)(3), which I have no clue how to get one, so I'm going to need help with that, and anybody who knows how to do that. And it was also suggested, while I'm waiting for that to go through all of its process, to make a corporation. The way it was explained to me, I'm out of my league here, and I'll just present it for you, maybe you already know this, is that if it's at a corporate level and it's done correctly, I already have a board of directors, and I have forwarded that, I believe, to you, and it would be, I guess, considered a profit-making type board, and then monies donated in there would be taxed upon taking it out for the chaplains to operate on. Then once the 501(c)(3) kicks in, then you roll all that money into there and you dissolve the corporation. That's if you want to hit the ground running. Otherwise, if we go through just the 501(c)(3) and we're in the county charter, we might not see a dime until the end of this year, when people do it. So that's where I stand with it right now, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, because you have everything on there. And do you have any questions about this?
Mr. Foster, I know you're doing this as a volunteer, and I'd first like to say, I appreciate anybody who comes forward and says to the county, "I volunteer my time, and I want to help people who need help." So I commend you on that, but I do have a couple of questions. I did some research on chaplains. I did some research on chaplains in communities. We have spoken multiple times about this, and I thought I'd, rather than just shoot from the hip, I'd like to have additional information. I have some concern about your background and a chaplain being a non-denominational spiritual leader, in terms of, rather than being a specific religion, open to, for example, I'm reading a, just, and this is, there's many of them, but I just pulled this one out, a definition, a chaplain is a non-denominational cleric, such as a minister, priest, pastor, rabbi, or imam, or lay representative of religious tradition. So I wanted to just verify that your chaplain corps will be, well, spiritually-based, non-spiritually-denominational-centered. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, and that's an excellent question that needs to be brought out before everybody. In going through some chaplain training classes that I have done, some of them in-person, some of them online, I'll give you a brief example. There was a chaplain that was head chaplain for his agency for two different police departments, and he is training a class of pastors from different churches. And he said, "I just want to let you folks know now that when you become a chaplain and you respond, you leave your collar and your insignias at your place of worship. You are no longer a pastor of your faith, you are non-denominational." The number-one word that describes a chaplain is presence, just his or her presence at the scene of some kind of a tragedy, and to offer with, the main thing when it comes to whatever your religious faith is, is to, like we have for the United States, one nation under God, in God we serve, we trust. It's in our money, it's on, you're seeing it go on multiple law enforcement vehicles everywhere. But it doesn't say the different names of the different denominations, and this organization will be serving everybody, I don't care who you are. Everybody, every human being needs to have comfort and guidance, because when you're going through a traumatic event, your brain gets scrambled, you don't know where to turn to, and that's what this organization is designed to be there, and not promote. A pastor is not allowed to, as acting as a chaplain, to promote his particular, or her congregation, period.
My next question is, my first thought was, until just now, that you really were intended to work with first responders as opposed to victims, but I think I'm hearing now that victims may be included in your organization?
Absolutely. When the chaplains...
I'm sorry.
You want to repeat that?
Do I need to repeat it?
Yeah.
Okay. The quest, I'm sorry. The question was, you know, I'm normally called a loudmouth, I'm really surprised. The question was, from previous discussions you and I have had, my impression was that your chaplain corps, and it kind of grew from a corps. Originally, I thought it was just you, and then you added more people and made this into a more significant organization, was to assist with the first responders with their crisis and dealing with what they're dealing with, and now I'm hearing that you're opening this up to victims also, the person who is having the tragedy. Is that what I'm understanding correctly?
Yes. Well, in the interest of your time and other people behind me, I'll try and go through real quick. The organization...
Don't go so quick. This is a really important thing. You're asking us to change the charter, enter a whole new organization. I think it's really important for the three of us and everybody else to understand what it is we're doing, what you're going to do, who you're going to do it with, how it's going to work. Have you discussed it with the sheriff's department and EMS and the hospital and the coroner and all those people that you're going to interact with? I'm interested in knowing what their reaction is. Are they inviting you in to do this? Are they rebuffing you? How is this being received? So please, don't rush this through. I think this is a very important issue.
Well, one of my desires when I came here was to not rattle on too much, because when I believe in a cause, I can go on and on and on. The organization will start at the beginning, and yes, to your question, it serves the general public as well as the emergency service. Custer County Corps of Chaplains, which is the four Cs, forward slash, Emergency Responding Chaplains, ERC. We have two different types of chaplains here under the whole organization. We also have, when I did my research for different organizations around the country, they were pretty much the same, in just an overall blanket, but what came to me was we have a need to do something a little bit different out here. This could be the first of its kind, I don't know, because I, obviously, I haven't looked at everyone in the United States. First of all, when you have your chaplains, they are human beings like any emergency responder or the general public. When you're at the scene, and I speak from over 30 years in the fire service and as a paramedic, and seen everything that Hollywood can come up with in a gory movie, you have an effect on your being, your mental health, and that's when you get to PTS and PTSD. So I felt that the chaplains needed to have what's called elder chaplains. Danny Benninger, who's sitting right over here, is one of my elder chaplains. He graciously accepted to come on. What an elder chaplain is, a chaplain's chaplain, they are not to be involved, they can be involved in the training as much as they want, but they are not to be involved in the emergencies at all. They need to have a clear mind and a clear heart. So if a chaplain can't solve what his or her problem is amongst ourselves, or with the head chaplain like myself or my assistants, then we recommend them to go and see our elder chaplains. I have another one that is not here right now. And so they're right there to help keep us healthy as an organization. Now, when you drop down below the head chaplain and the two assistants, then you have your core chaplains, and you have your emergency responding chaplains. The emergency responding chaplains, the whole goal is, you always have at least two chaplains to respond upon 911 if it meets protocol. They respond to the scene, and they are there to oversee the whole operation, they're not to be involved in it unless asked to, and they feel comfortable. They don't feel comfortable, say, "I don't feel comfortable," to the incident commander, and they stand back, and they watch everybody that's going on, the public, as well as the emergency responders. Then they target people they think might be having a problem, but they don't talk to them at the time, and they merge to tell it's all said and done. I'll give you an example. Say, there's a husband and wife who just had their house burned to the ground, and they're obviously, from the many instances I've been on, they are in shock, they don't have many words, they have duress in their faces. The chaplain can, at times, if it's appropriate, go up and say, "How are you doing?" and introduce themselves. "I am free to your service to help you if you would like." And so they would be responding to the public. Now, when it comes to emergency responding chaplains, that, those chaplains by themselves, they're assigned to emergency responders and their families if they are needed. They can contact them later on, say, "Hey, you know, I noticed that the incident went down," whatever, you know, "And does anything, any concerns you have? Can we talk about it, a cup of coffee, whatever, do you want to?" It's either it's a closed question, it's a yes or a no. And then when you get to have the conversation, then we have an open question, for example, you know, "Where were you at the time the alarm went off? When you got there, what did you see? What did you feel?" The whole point of this whole process, dealing with people, is to get them to talk about it, bring it out, stay away from closed-in questions. Sometimes you have to, but you have an emergency responding, and then you have the core chaplains, they deal just with the general public. They cannot deal with emergency responding personnel because they have not had a background in it.
Okay, thank you. What has been the response with your discussions from the various functions in the community, the sheriff's department, fire department, EMS? How do they feel about having a chaplain available, a chaplain on scene? Have you had discourse with them and figured out how they feel?
Been working on this for several months, meeting with all of our government heads that I could possibly get together with, and it's been 100% support. The comments that I find most common, and it's needed now, it's long overdue, and they want it really bad. And I've even spoken with a few individuals that are in head positions in our government, that they know people that are struggling from being on incidents where there was death involved, and it's one thing to train how to rescue someone from a fire, someone from trapped in a car, or fallen from a cliff. You're trained, you do it well, because the one thing they're not trained is how to deal with their feelings afterwards, and that's when PTS and PTSD kick in. And we want to, we want to work with all these folks to keep the D from kicking in, because a lot of it, if it's not checked and they don't know. I went through it for many years, and I did not know what was wrong with me. I knew I was struggling in many areas. I talked about it with my wife, I prayed a lot, and so I went through the roller coaster, and it wasn't until I took the training to be a chaplain from Billy Graham Ministries that I learned what I was going through, and I went, the light came on. I went, "Oh, my goodness." And that's common throughout emergency service and the general public, which breaks up marriages and causes all kinds of problems on both sides. So it needs to, the information needs to get out there, we're here and we can help you deal with it, but you have to be trained as a chaplain properly. You can't just say, "I'm a good guy, can you sign me on?" No.
Just to reiterate, I want to make sure that I'm clear. You're not asking for any funds from the county, you're not asking for any meeting rooms or offices.
No.
You're just asking for a blessing to allow this organization to move forward, is that correct?
That, as well as having it in the county charter, which I guess...
That's what I meant when I said blessing.
Yeah, and I guess you have to be sworn into office, I want to make it official. I don't want this to be seen as a good old boys' organization. I want it to be professional, just like the sheriff's department, or the fire, any EMS, with uniforms, a whole shot, continuing education hours that have got to be met, otherwise you're on inactive status until you've caught up. When I was a paramedic with the Los Angeles County Fire Department, who started paramedics for the United States, went throughout the world, continuing education in so many categories, every quarter you had to have, and it is volunteer, but it'll be handled with gentleness, otherwise you're going to have nobody come forward. But yes, I want this to be professional all the way around.
I'd like to pass, if I may, I'm sorry.
Normally, what we do is, one person's asked a question, then another one, and then another one, so we pass it around.
That's fine. I relinquish the floor.
Eric, I have two questions for you. I was looking at your board of directors that you had sent us from 12/26, and I'm just going to say, Jay, do you have a concern with a conflict of interest being on that board?
I absolutely do, and I mentioned it to you, Eric. I was kind of surprised when I saw my name was still on there. Before I became a commissioner, you asked me if I would be interested, and I said I would, and either I meant to, or I did, and somehow it didn't get through, to ask you to remove me, because I felt it would be a conflict of interest for me to sit on your board at the same time. Now, just for the record, I'd like to say that I have not been to any board meetings, I have not made any decisions, I have not made any votes, I have had no, other than our informal discussions, I have had no interaction with your organization. So I think your point is well taken. Either I had meant to ask you to remove me, once I became a commissioner, or I failed to tell you and I meant to.
That's draft form. Thank you for asking that, because that does need to be covered. I understand your position now, representing the county and so forth, and I thought I had sent one forward that had you as business owner, I didn't, I took the commissioner off, because I didn't know where we stood yet, you had not told me, Eric, take me off yet. I understand that, and that's not a problem at all, because that board of directors, there may be another person that may say, "I just don't have the time," and he's already informed me on that, but I'll come to the first meeting, see what's involved, then I, if I stay, I stay, if I don't. So it's a draft, board of directors come and go, it's not like a two-year, you're voted in, you're in, you're there. So even the, the whole program in itself is still, I have not formalized it to be the permanent program as written, until the board of directors say, "We agree," stamp it, take the draft off the top. Board of directors the same way. So I will take you off. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your understanding.
Thank you, Don. I meant to mention that when I was speaking.
Okay. My other question is, have you met with Cindy Howard?
I tried to contact Cindy. I emailed her on, or I texted her on her private phone, and I also left her a message on her private phone. And I also left her a message on her private phone. It was given, her, her private number was given to me by the sheriff, and he highly recommended I contact her. I did that. And she did text me back with a message, which I'm not gonna say what it was. I was kinda surprised. And then later on, I got ahold of her through the internet, her business cellphone, and I contacted her with a message of my name again and reiterated that I'd called her before. And now I've had no contact with her. So she might be too busy.
Okay. I guess I would like to have more communication with Cindy and our fire department, our sheriff, because I'd like to see how this would be integrated with our emergency plan already. You know, who, what position would he be in as the first responder?
Well, I think we've got other basic questions before we get that deep in the weeds. First of all, are you, excuse me, anything else?
Those are things that are just spending money.
Just to let you know, when you, when you talk about the contact and communication, I did address the, the fire board. I've been working with Roger Camper, who is the president of it, last week. And they know the whole program. I have been in contact with the fire chief. I've sent him the documents that you folks have as well, so he knows. And I got a very positive email back from him this morning. And he's looking forward to seeing, you know, how everything turns out.
Thank you.
I think I'll do it right now before I respond. Shannon, would you have any comments you wanna make at this time?
Well, I apologize for not being here when, when we first came in and Eric was introduced because I had told Eric that I would kinda give a little prelude before he spoke. So, you know, this is, this has been kind of in the make, geez, for well over a year and a half now, started with Danny Viniger. And I, I don't know, I've been in office maybe five or six months. And Danny actually approached me because he has experience in the police chaplains corps in Missouri. And he asked if I would be interested. And, and we had discussion, and that, and that wasn't an option in, in the prior administration. And, but, but with my experience before coming here, we had a chaplains program there. And that's something I wanted to really iterate. This is not something that other counties and agencies, you know, don't have. This is a very common, uh, organization, you know, that's in service to emergency services personnel. So, so this happened to Danny, and I talked, and then Danny's had some family struggles and health issues. And so we never really got going off the ground. And so meanwhile, then Eric approached me with his ideas and thoughts. And so I said, "Yes," you know. And I pointed him to Danny and said, "Hey, you know, Danny and I had talked. So get with him." And so Eric has done a ton of research and a lot, as you can see by the, he's done a lot of work on this. And as he said, he's passionate about it. He has the energy and the time. And so he's worked with that. So, you know, in my conversations with the other emergency services groups as well, and talking with Eric, I mean, Eric and I have met several times and lots of emails. I'm in full support of this because the reality is, you know, in first responders, they need, they need someone that they can talk to and be, that they're familiar with, that a lot of times you don't wanna share with your spouse, or you're not gonna share with your coworkers because it's, it's a sign of weakness, or at least it's inferred that way sometimes. But you have stuff that's bottled up and you don't sleep. And it affects a lot of things. As Eric alluded to, relationships, both personal, professional, work, performance, those are the type of things. And so to have a core group of people that, that just stop in at the EMS bar, at the fire station, "How's things going? Hey, can I come out and ride with you for an hour?" And just visit. And where you get that personal relationship going, then when tragedy does strike, you're much more comfortable. And so establishing this and getting this going long before we have another tragedy is, I think, is really a key asset for us. And so I'm in full support. You know, we haven't, we haven't gotten every little line item worked out. But Eric and I did talk. So, you know, it might fall under where the chaplains corps falls, under the sheriff's office, you know. And that's not my decision to make, of course. But so that there is that structure, there's a department hit somewhere that they fall under to keep, you know, just to keep things moving and tracking. I understand that, and I would be willing to do that. But no, I mean, I've, he's my full, you know, he has my full support on this. It is really important. And, you know, Jay asked some really good questions about denominations. So that's not the point. And this is not a, hey, sit down, just sit down and talk about Jesus. That's, that is not, this is a counselor that can offer parishioner, you know, some, some counseling that goes into spiritual needs. If the person that's talking to the chaplain wants that, we're not forcing this on anyone. It's never forced on. The only time that would happen is, let's say that there's a, there's a tragedy and we have a really gruesome scene. You know, I don't wanna be any specific because God forbid. So, but it's not good. And you know what it affects? Because we are a small community. We know people. If I notice that one of my folks was struggling, I might assign them that they have to sit down and speak with one of the chaplains for thirty minutes, three times, just to try to get them to open up and get some out. It's not spiritual guidance. It's just counseling because that's what their, that's what their strengths are. That's really what they are. And then, of course, if that didn't work, then, then we would become a psychologist or psychiatrist that we would assign them to. But it's, you know, it's, that's, that's where I see that going with. One thing to keep in mind is so, you know, when you, you asked about victims. So that's a, there's a fine line there because there are a lot of statutory requirements that as the sheriff's office, we have to meet when it comes to victims of violent crimes, so on and so forth. So they would only be available if the victim sought them out. You know, if they're on scene and, and the victim said, "Can I talk to your chaplain?" They would ask that. They would never be assigned to go talk to the victim because that, we have a victim's advocate in the office that would serve that purpose for statutory requirements to meet all of those. So while they're available, I don't wanna get that mixed up. We have a victim's advocate that handles the statutory requirements for victims. But, but otherwise, yeah, I mean, as you guys know me, I could talk when I, when I believe in something. So I'll cut it short. But I, I do think that it's a, that it's a good program. And once we get all the fine details worked out, I think it's gonna be powerful.
Okay. There comes a time, I guess, when, when everybody is put on spot. I feel a situation here that we need to think about and work through. I've had people contact me and complain because the sheriff's cars have "In God We Trust." It's important that we do have a separation of church and state. I wanna be sure as we put this together that we maintain that separation because we do have folks out there that are concerned about that. I don't know how we organize this. I don't know if this is in Fremont County. Do you know if there was this on a charter? Or how was it handled as a, as a volunteer corps that you individually contacted? They had a group that you worked with?
So, so I can't speak to that, Bob, because, you know, we were a municipality, so we, we weren't in the county charter, our chaplains program, so I can't.
Those are, those are questions that I think we need to explore. I, I, have I made that statement? On the other side, I've had occasion to see folks in various emergency situations and traumas. I wanna share a story with you that's a little bit gory, but I think you need to understand this. It was shared with me a week or so ago about a suicide sometime in the past. And when the coroner responded on the scene, there were still fluids and body parts falling off the ceiling. They went in and then they went back out for a while, then went back in. And that was an extremely traumatic situation. There's times I know that, that when people have, I would, I would assume when, when you arrive on scene, Shannon, as a, as the deputies do when you have a death, I'm sure there's family members oftentimes that are very distraught. And again, how do you fill that in? I mean, they're a victim, but they're not a victim of a crime. They're a victim of an emotional situation. So I would ask the counselor, maybe, Clint, do we have some guidance? Do you have any thoughts on this? I wanna be sure that, you know, I, I endorse a program as a program, but I wanna be sure we don't violate the principles of, of the separation. I know we have folks that will very adamantly bring that to the forefront of the counties.
Well, I thank you, Bob, because I, I do have some legal concerns about the request. I mean, I think it's a great program. And certainly, if you were just seeking a resolution of support from the county, that would be something you could do. But you're asking for more. First of all, you talk about the county charter. I'm not even aware that we have a county charter as such. It's not something I've ever seen. The, Custer County is a political subdivision of the state of Colorado. The Board of County Commissioners has certain statutory duties, and they can't go beyond that. Essentially, what you're asking for here, it sounds to me, is official recognition, making this an arm of Custer County. And I, I think there is a very serious constitutional issue there because we can't make any laws respecting religion. And that's essentially, especially when you're talking about being sworn into office. I mean, I'm assuming you're talking about being sworn into office somehow as with the stamp of approval from the county or under some sort of county authority, which I don't believe the county can give. I think the county can wholeheartedly endorse this through a resolution. But I am not sure that going the step that Mr. Foster's asking for here is permitted by law.
That's why I brought it. I have a lot of ignorance on my part. And county charter, I never thought of that until the, the term was brought up to me. That's why I wanted to bring it before you, because that's what you do. And so guidance is...
I don't mean this as any kind of a criticism.
No, I know that. I know that. But I agree. When you're dealing with the government, and we've all heard many stories of a lot of concerned citizens, we don't wanna create a headache. We wanna create a program that is well-accepted and wanted by everybody. And that's hard to do. And that's really tough. And when you get into legal issues, which is your neighborhood, that's where we need guidance. And I need guidance on this. So I'm asking for your help as well, so that we do it right the first time. I do know that fire departments, which are funded by tax dollars, are part of counties and cities as well as police departments, they have chaplains. They run the organization. And the ones I've looked at, a lot of them are Christian-based. They're not, you know, they just say that's a general term because there's many face, and then you get into the "In God We Trust," which you brought up, you know, people that, that are atheists, and they don't want that on there. So we have a lot of things that we need to look at and do it right the first time. So whatever you as counsel suggest, I'm all ears. I just wanna do it right is all.
Well, what I need for you to do, and the other agencies that you've talked about that do have a chaplain corps set up, find out how they did it. I mean, is there, I can't imagine that there's any law that's been passed or an ordinance or anything else that would authorize that. I mean, I, it just, it seems to me it's clearly violating the federal constitution and the state constitution. You know, if you start recognizing a particular faith-based organization, regard even if it's a non-denominational. So I guess I'd like to know how they're set up. I mean, I know, obviously, our own military has chaplain corps. But counties do have limitations on what they can do. And there's nothing in the statutes that say what counties can do that would authorize them to set something like this up. So...
True.
But I'd take a look into it and see if you can get some more information. I'd be happy to, to consider how they've done it.
I will ask. I've got one police department north of us that I will contact, the lieutenant who heads up their program, and I'll ask him that question. And hopefully, he can email me something, which I will email that to Brendan Sheen, and then that would get to you. And you can take a look at that and see if that fits within our scope.
Yeah, find out how their organization, how they're set up. And the police department, perhaps on its own, could have a chaplain corps. But to go to the town council or however it's set up and get their authority to set it up that way, I question whether it's done like that or not. I just, I don't think it can be done that way. But I'll, I'll be happy to look at whatever you can find.
We'll work on it. Not a problem.
Now, when we ask for public comments, I would ask that you identify yourself again because it's hard to distinguish voices on the recording sometime.
John Johnston. Clint just addressed my question. I was concerned. His one request was to grant a charter. I didn't understand what that request meant. So it's been addressed. Thank you.
Paul, identify yourself.
Paul Sage. And I would be speaking as Custer County Coordinator of Volunteer Organizations After Being Disaster. And after consulting with my supervisor in Denver with regard to this, which I just wrote pieces of this here and then, she hadn't heard anything about Eric's plans or anything like that. FEMA already has a spiritual care program, well-developed, legal, been in place since the seventies, actually, as other terms. But in more recent terms, since 2001, as FEMA and Homeland Security have grown, that program has stood alone in Colorado, consists of several hundred people. She said that she would be happy to consult with Eric and anybody else who wanted to work on that. But having no knowledge of it, and then she's the state volunteer coordinator that works for Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. She said that, knowing nothing about it, that could be stepping in squishy ground for the county to get involved in. For the organization to exist, it's wonderful. And she said that they would even offer to bring training and guidance to set the whole thing up, up here.
Thank you. My response to your comment would be, first of all, it's emergency management. When we have an individual car wreck out here or an individual death, it's certainly not a federal emergency management issue. Secondly, I, I'm saying this as a commissioner's kind of personal response. But I think our county needs to handle our county needs at the county level without the federal or the state government. I mean, if we have an emergency disaster, then I would think when they come in and then they cooperate. But I, again, I'm concerned that, I appreciate where you're coming from. But I, my initial thought, and my colleagues may wanna respond, is that may be a little high for our daily basis.
And the point there was to be able to get a standardized program. If they wanna all sit in the sheriff's department all day long or sit in, um, the fire department anywhere and respond individually to incidents, that's all well and good. But to have a standard, federally-approved, non-denominational approach to the whole thing, I think that's a safety net.
I agree. From your standpoint, I'd still come back to, as our county and our citizens, I think we have the responsibility to respond to their needs.
Right. And they would. These people would respond to those needs, just as they intend to do.
Any other comments?
I think I could say it sounds to me like Mr. Foster, Mr. Sage probably ought to get together, get the person's name.
Sure.
I mean, it sounds to me like there's wonderful resources that are available that could help find to this. Listening to our attorney's comments, I do have those concerns. Formally adopting a chaplain program in the county seems like we're on, what was the term, squishy ground? Is that what it was? And I agree with that. But that doesn't mean, I don't think it's a, it sounds like it has the basis of an excellent program to help our citizens. Like I said, my first comment was, that's what you're trying to do. And it's gonna be very hard for me to say, "Not a good deal." Sorry.
I would just like to add, so obviously, through this conversation, we just have a little more homework to do.
Oh, sure. I don't expect to come here this morning and bam. No, this is just the beginning. One of the things I learned about being a rapid-response team chaplain for Billy Graham Ministries is that, yeah, that's great, but it takes time to mobilize and get chaplains to a disaster. And I'm interested very much in a passion. I'm an emergency responder by heart. I will always be that way. And getting something to the scene immediately, rather waiting from a national level for them to get out here two days later, three days later, whatever it takes, whether, you know. But there's a, there's a wealth of good information and programs already existing. And one of the things that I learned in my research was, I learned this clear back in the early eighties. Don't go out and recreate a wheel when one's already existing. How about if a, a program already has a wheel with spokes in it? How about adding rubber on making tires? Make it better. And I'm a firm believer in adopting and adding and massaging to fit your needs. That's what other chaplain programs have stated. Hey, go out there, look at other programs, make one custom for your area and your needs. Because they're not all the same. We are rural. So we have different requirements than, say, the inner city like Colorado Springs or Denver. It's much different out here, as you know. So, yeah, more work needs to be done. I have no problem with that.
I think we have probably discussed this long enough today. We do have other...
I think we have probably discussed this long enough today, we do have other business, but I would suggest we have this under old and new business. So at any time in the future, we can bring it back up and get into it. And I would suggest again that you two get together and then let us know when we're ready to move forward.
Do you have business?
And we'll go from there.
Brenda, I'll contact Brenda in regards to contacting legal counsel and stuff like that, if that's all right.
And I do commend you, I think it's something that's needed. We just need to be sure we put together in the right way.
A hundred percent, yes. Okay. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim, for all your efforts.
Thank you, Eric.
Our next item of business will be the International Dark Skies with Jim Bradburn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you, Jay.
Jim?
Let me be the last one to congratulate you. I've already done it to him, but Bob was already in, so.
You got any more to say?
Oh, hi Clint. Do we have to do one of those?
The secret handshake?
No, I meant, I meant, we have to tell people that you're on my board.
Or disclosure?
Disclosure, that's what I was looking for.
Oh, you're good.
Am I good? Okay. And boy, are you guys lucky to have him, I got to tell you. I'm here to talk to you about something we would like to try. I don't know if you did get my little, did you get that? I sent it to you. If you want to read it, go ahead. It tells you basically what I want to chat about. Sorry you didn't get it. I sent it in, but apparently it didn't get, maybe I didn't send it in in time. Where's Brenda? When you need her.
I saw it.
Do you have this document that they're speaking of from Jim? Is it in our packet?
I didn't see it in the packet, but I could get it.
Well, it's pretty short, and, Donna, you can hold me to it, did I say what's on there?
Let me pass it to my colleagues.
Yeah.
I'll read this into the minutes, Dark Skies Discussion Points for the Custer County Board of County Commissioners, January 20, 2017. Overview: Dark Skies would like to work with the citizens of Custer County to allow the International Dark Sky Organization, identified as IDA, to designate the Wet Mountain Valley and International Dark Sky Reserve. You most likely recall that Silvercliff and Westcliff were designated an IDA community in 2015. Process is fairly simple on our end, but does require some actions by the BOCC and staff. Why do this? While seeking IDA community designation for Westcliff and Silvercliff, Dark Skies received well over 100 letters of support, not a single negative for the effort. Since then, both towns have enjoyed increased local, regional, national, and international recognition, which has led to demonstratively increase to tourism. Dark Skies believes this is a healthy and sustainable trend that should increase the economic well-being for the whole county. What is required? The IDA has set three conditions for their consideration. One, that there is a defined geographical description of the valley. Two, that the BOCC and Act Lighting Ordinance is similar to those incorporated into the Westcliff and Silvercliff Town Ordinances. Three, the general approval come from the county residents. Thank you for the communication.
Yep. If you want to keep that, that's fine.
I'm passing to the.
Yeah, sure. Work, work. So essentially, you've heard what I've come here to talk about. I would say that the process to become a preserve, if we were successful, and you all think that's a good idea, we would be the first in the country to be a preserve. There's only, I think there's two others in the world, so it'd be a very wonderful thing to make us a preserve. But what it does-
Excuse me, Jim, we can't shut the doors, we have to leave a moment a little bit.
Sorry. Sorry about this air thing, too. I've got time to get over. Chemo, it's a great thing. Don't do that. If you ever have cancer, don't, well, anyway, another discussion. Anyway, so when we went about the process of getting the two towns designated, we, as I said, as it said, we received well over 100 letters, and I can tell you, most of those letters were weren't county residents, they weren't town residents. So it was a broad approval, and as I said, we didn't receive anything negative. And so we thought that perhaps we were not as broad-thinking as we should have been, that we should have included the whole valley, not just the two towns. And the International Dark Skies are very much in favor of this, because it would be, one, the first preserve in the world, in the country, I said. And two, I think personally, and this is my own feelings, that it would again demonstrate to the state, which is now interested in talking about Westcliff, Silvercliff, and the Wet Mountain Valley, as a designation, as part of the reason to come to Colorado. I could talk about that in more specific terms in a minute, if you'd like. But it also just increases, in my view, the already demonstrated increase in tourism that's come because of the designation of the two towns. And I just think from a personal point of view, and a lover of the night sky, that it's the right thing to do. It gets us back to the comment I think you made, Bob, a long time ago, to me and Jay's office, about coming out here as a boy and playing out underneath the stars and being able to see all these beautiful stars without all these lights around here. So those lights, let me just talk about those a little bit. We are working with Sangre de Cristo Power and some of the ranchers already. They've all beginning to ask for a light fixture that is Dark Sky compliant. Sangre de Cristo has already started that process, because they want to reduce power for each one of those lamps that are out there. And there's a reason for that, so economically, from their point of view, that's where they're headed. LEDs are a great way of doing that, they're about an 80% reduction in the power usage. Since then, just recently, the American Medical Association has come out with a long study that they did of LEDs, to warm my heart, because I'm an older guy, and when I see an LED at night that's really, really bright, or very bluish in color, it's hard for me to see it. And they said, that's because your eyes, our eyes, all of us, over time, we could see the blues and the reds, but as we get older, we can't see the blues and reds as easily, but we still see the yellows. And a, something over 3,000 Kelvin, that's a temperature, to give you an example, we don't have an incandescent light bulb, but your incandescent light bulb in your house is 2,700 degrees Kelvin, if you have a reference. So 3,000, and you can look at the lights at Silvercliff, those are all 3,000, all the streetlights. That light is sort of the upper limit for us humans, and quite frankly, for animals as well. To not upset our circadian rhythm, we can sleep at night, and that's one of the problems of looking at a TV screen late at night, is that bluish light keeps you awake. So they've come out, the American Medical Association, has said 3,000 Kelvin is the limit. So we're working with Sangre de Cristo Power to replace the lights with LED Dark Sky compliant lights, and with 3,000 Kelvin as the maximum temperature of those lights. That process would satisfy what the third condition here is of the International Dark Skies, that we would get citizens' approval to do that, if the ranchers and citizens that live out in the county that have those lights wish to start to change them over time, that would certainly demonstrate that they have broad community support. I believe we already have it, at virtue of all the letters I got in support of the International Dark Sky community for the two towns.
I've got a question for you. What did the two towns do? Is this in their zoning regulations?
They did. In fact, Jay actually wrote the ones for the town of Westcliff, and Silvercliff just matched it.
Okay, that's the first place we need to start.
Yep.
We have a zoning officer and one of the board, planning and zoning people back here. Would either of you like to make a response to this?
I would. Jim, haven't you came before the-
This is, Jackie, I'll be, is that Jackie? Hi Jackie, I'm sorry, I can't turn around very well.
That's good. Okay, sorry about that. Have you not come before the planning commission prior to this, and we've had public meetings?
I don't believe I've talked about this specific issue, Jackie. I have spoken to Vic, and I just said, you know, this is something I'm thinking about doing in the future. I have spoken to Jay at one point in time, and they suggested that we wait until this all, you know, the transfer of power occurred and you all were in place, because this is going to take some time, so rather than have a change of administration. So at a point here, if this is acceptable as something to proceed with, with you all, I certainly would meet with the, with the planning commission, with a draft of what would need to be changed to the ordinances. Quite frankly, I don't even know if you have ordinances for lighting in the town, in this, in the county, excuse me.
I just have a question. What is the definition of a preserve for a county?
It's a good question, because I'm not sure I know that answer, quite frankly. IDA has several designations. Community is one of them, as we know. Park is another one, I know that. Place is one, and that's what, the Grand Canyon was just recently awarded, that designation. But a preserve is a place, in my view, that holds its value for an extended period of time, meaning it keeps itself dark, in this instance, for a long period of time. And it's a place that you can't violate that by putting in something in the future. So the need for ordinances, it says future lights, and this would only apply to future lights, is we don't, even Westcliff, Silvercliff didn't retroactive anything. We can't do that. We can't tell somebody, you got to change your lights. So we're asking that the future lights of the county be shielded.
You know, I'm a proponent of Dark Skies.
I know that.
Obviously.
And I appreciate that, very much.
I think for the towns, it's easy.
Yep.
I think for the county, it's much more difficult, because farmers have different lighting requirements. I think it's imperative, as Ms. Hobby said, that we have public forum inputs, discussion, and hear from the public. I mean, the letters, the positive letters are certainly persuasive, but I think the public forums are where the people go, I don't want this, I better come talk about it.
If I may interrupt, this is the process, it's already established if we go to planning and zoning.
I would agree.
That's where it needs to start, not from us.
I'm assuming that's where we're headed, is to a public hearing about the lights.
But that's, that's why we have a planning and zoning commission.
Absolutely. And we did the same with the two towns. I mean, we had public hearings.
We certainly did.
Go ahead.
Pat Bailey? Years ago, several years ago, when we were redoing, well, starting to come up with a master plan for the county, we had many people and organizations come in front of us, and Smokey Jack at that time came in front of us and spoke about Dark Skies, the beginning of all that. We, we tried to get something in the master plan, it's vague, but, and then from that point, it was going to go on to the planning commission, and possibly something would happen in the zoning resolution. But nothing, nothing's happened since that point. We haven't had any conversations with Jim, with Dark Skies, so that would be more, it would have to go back to the planning commission and go through everything you want to do.
Absolutely, I understand.
I would just like to make my comment on in favor of this, and I would recommend, and I speak for my colleagues, of course, that you pursue this and those are the processes that we have, and ultimately it'll come to us for a vote on whether we approve.
Right, I'm not seeking any vote today, I was just wanting to know if you all said no, 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 I would.
I'm trying to say-
I'd go someplace else, you know.
Let's continue to pursue it, and we'll see where it goes.
Sure.
I agree.
Do you have any other comments?
John Johnston, two questions. One, has the Wet Mountain Valley been geographically defined for Dark Skies? And the other question, as you mentioned, it had to have public approval, does that mean a public vote?
Let me answer the last question first, John. No, it does not. It just has to, we have to demonstrate to Dark Skies, International Dark Skies, that we have public support. It doesn't have to be 100% either. You know, they fully understand, and not everybody's going to be in favor of this, that's understood.
But these are all details that will come out of planning and zoning and so forth. I think, I think we've got the mechanism in place to address this.
I can answer the first question, if you wish.
Okay.
The geographic area, John, would be the two ridges of the two mountain ranges, the Sangre de Cristo and the Wet Mountains. O'Fno County to the southeast, and Fremont County to the northwest.
Two more counties.
Okay, so, doesn't count, no, that's the line, that's the edge of the geographic area, so it's everything within that area.
I think we need to move along, but go ahead.
Just a quick question. You said you need to demonstrate public support to Dark Skies International. Does that mean that one positive letter, they would accept that as public support?
I can't speak for them, but no, I can't believe it.
I think we're too far in the weeds, folks. This goes back to planning and zoning, we have processes on all these questions, it's going to be a part of their process, isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
And I want to commend you on all the work you've done for the Dark Skies.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you. Don't knock the chair over.
Thanks for contacting.
Thank you.
Yes.
As a side light, I've asked Sangre de Cristo about getting a Dark Sky friendly light out there, and the people here don't know anything about it.
Well, it's funny, because I've talked to Don Kaufman himself directly about this.
Well, I asked him when I talked to him when the power poles were blown down.
Oh, well, Mike Allen.
He said, we don't know what you're talking about.
Mike Allen, I just sent a letter to yesterday, so he should know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next one we have is some appointments. We have administrative assistant to the board. The other day, and it had not been done in the past, but we failed to appoint Brenda as our administrative assistant. I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move that we appoint Brenda Gady as the Board of County Commissioners Assistant to the Board.
I'll second that motion.
You're second? Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is the airport with Dallas Anderson. Welcome.
All right, Dallas, good to see you.
Hi, Jay. Clint.
Dallas.
Bob.
Dallas.
And congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I brought my key this time, so it matches.
All right. Good, good.
Okay. Well, originally, this month, I wasn't thinking that I was going to get to address the board this month, but I'm glad I can, so we don't have a lot of way past items that I think you should be apprised of in a meeting next month, so. This is the, I think you all probably should have gotten a copy of this report.
This, we're not here for an official report, and that will occur during our report periods next time.
Oh, okay. Well, in that case-
I mean, you contacted me and said you had something specific you wanted to bring forward.
Right. Jay has a copy of this. We'll just get right into this then. Over the past few months, and especially the last two and a half months, we have a problem with what we perceive as the plowing of the snow from the runway and taxiways at the airport. We've had three really good snowstorms out there, and I can tell you without a lot of boring stuff, that the first snowstorm was plowed three days after it snowed. The second one was three days after it snowed, and the third one was four days after it We would like to know from you as the board, who is prime for plowing snow at the airport, whether it be road and bridge, or the advisory board, or a combination, and what kind of When they did plow the snow these last three times, they didn't remove all the snow from the runway and taxiways, they're leaving about an inch and a half or so. The 16th of December is when it snowed, the 19th of December is when they plowed.
You already, excuse me, you already made those points.
Right.
And a number of these items we have, the previous board had already answered those.
Right, well-
So now you're coming back for the- So now you're coming back for the new board to make a decision on them, is that what the purpose of this is?
Just that, the first couple of lines on this page is all I wanted to talk about, and that is plowing the snow. They left this coat of snow on the tarmac. The high temperature for two days was nine below zero out there. I think that what they were thinking was, you know, it plowed out a little bit, the sun was shining, it melted off. Well, it didn't. Didn't melt it for five days. So anyway, we think that as soon as it stops snowing, within a reasonable time, not in the middle of the night or anything like that, that the snow should be removed from the runway and taxiways. I contacted the air and ice division about that, and I didn't get an answer back, if there's a standard for snowplow and that kind of stuff. So anyway, and so that's what we're frustrated with, is that we don't think that it's been timely in getting the snow plowed. And another thing, we took our plow truck to Road and Bridge on the 20th of December, and we found out yesterday it was ready for pickup, and that's been nearly a month. So we didn't have our truck to be able to use it.
Had you contacted them prior to yesterday?
Roger had talked to Bob Custer. He doesn't seem to want to talk to me, and he talked to Bob Custer, this is Friday, last Monday, and told him that the truck was going to be ready about Wednesday. Well, we picked it up yesterday.
Dallas, talking about your snowplow, do you do your own plowing, and you just didn't do it these couple times?
If I may bring the commissioner up to date on this, the responsibility, and we'll get into this, we get into the Road and Bridge positions and so forth, but the responsibility for removing snow at the airport is the county's. It's the Road and Bridge. And they do it, first of all, we do it as it fits into the priorities. In this particular case, they were still sanding roads, school bus routes yesterday, trying to improve the traction, because the ice layer that was underneath the snow, because as it was falling, it kept melting and kept freezing.
Yeah, well...
The point is, is that as soon as they can get out there, they plow it. And again, that's going to depend on the, on the timing, the second thing.
I was going to make a comment before I was interrupted, that I think we need to look at the priorities, and how many people are affected, and what's the best we can use our Road and Bridge for, for the most good.
Right.
And I, while I understand, and I was at your meeting yesterday, and I vowed to you that I would try to help you support the things that I can with the airport, I have much more concern for my citizens driving on the roads, my school buses, so I, I'm certainly not making, I have no information other than what you're telling me, but it sounds to me like Road and Bridge was probably out taking care of the masses, as opposed to the smaller number of people who would be using the airport. So the question was, on your snowplow that you're getting back, is that something you plowed yourself? I understand that Road and Bridge is responsible for it, but you have, you keep a plow at the airport?
We have a plow truck and a tractor with a snowplow.
Okay. And do people from the airport do the plowing if they need to?
Right. The prior board determined that the responsibility for the snowplowing was the county, and they, as I understood it, put that job on Road and Bridge. And we, as an advisory board, a couple of us used the tractor and the snowplow truck to kind of clean up piles of snow here and there that the big maintainers leave.
So if I'm hearing right now, excuse me for interrupting you, if I'm hearing correctly, if the timeframe for the county to get to the airport is longer than you desire, you get in the snow, in the snowplow and fix yourself, go ahead.
We had some concerns about this, because of the liability issues, and what is the training in the snowplow operators? And anyone working on the county road has to have a CED. We felt from a liability standpoint that a Road and Bridge was for the people that are trained for snow removal. We have volunteers that can volunteer to work out there, but it's a little more of a complex issue than just hopping on a tractor and going.
It is.
It's something that if the airport does it, and they leave a, there's some ice there on the runway, or a chunk of ice, the plane hits it and crashes.
I understand.
The airport plowed it, so now we are on the line as volunteers out there. Now, another issue that you need to be aware of is that we are in the process of hiring a new road boss.
I knew that, yes.
And, okay, well, because you knew that, I'm a little surprised that you brought this forward, when you know we were trying to work on it already, but I appreciate that. The other, the other thing is that I firmly believe the airport's important to us. I believe it's important we get a plow as quick as we can, and we will try to address how we prioritize and what happens. But again, I know in this case, I mean, I was, I was out Sunday or Monday afternoon because there was a stuck school bus. Well, Monday was a holiday, and the basic premise was that we had, we don't plow there, we have six inches of snow. Well, the snow never really got to that depth, because it kept melting and freezing. Well, in hindsight, we probably should have been on a Monday plowing roads.
Well, to answer Jay's question, the last time the airport plowed the snow off the runway, I did it. And I plowed the runway, the taxiway, and the parking ramp, and it took me five hours. So the little tractor removed snow, but not as fast as a 12-foot blade on a maintainer.
Yes, Donna.
I understand that you are frustrated by maybe a level of communication with...
That, too, yeah.
Okay. Can you just tell us briefly in the past, what has the communication been between you and roads and bridges with, do they say to you, I'm going to be there tomorrow, because I know that you have to legally say, is our airport closed or not? You have to give notice, correct?
Well, the first thing, I have communicated with the road boss many times in the last year, by email. My telephone is not all that reliable. I've received one response to emails from him in the past year. Like I say, he talked to Bob Custer the first of this week. He never, ever has communicated to me when something was ready, when it was going to be ready, anything like that. Communication has been like zero from Road and Bridge to me personally, although he has talked to a couple other members of the board.
But what's the notice you have to give from the airport to the public, so pilots know whether they can land or not?
Okay, we can post a notum with Colorado aeronautics at any time. Whenever we call them, the notum is good for 24 hours. It's a notice to airmen, the general pilot. And we find, we find out, well, the snow back in December, two pilots landed in that snow, complained about it, something severely, but they did not read the notums, because we had a notum out for that.
Okay.
And they, they don't read the notums, but that's, that's our option, to call Colorado aeronautics and post the notum, that the runway's either closed, or snow packed, this, you know, the conditions of it. But we have to do it every 24 hours.
So is the purpose of meeting us today to explain to us about the slow response you're getting with the truck repair and the plowing?
That's our frustration.
Okay.
We think we might, well, we think we need a real high priority, that's, but that's us. We think a month is a little overtime, just to have a truck checked out and make sure that it's ready to run. The tractor's at the shot now, it needs a blade section put on the plow, because it's worn out.
I'll go for a minute.
I would like to...
I think I'll hit this exactly on the head. We have the new road boss coming in.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Question. I think what you're talking about is history, but as we've said, we're in the process of hiring a new road boss.
Okay.
So I think, we made this statement, and these two made it when we come in, we're not going back to yesterday, we're going from today forward. And I think that's what we need to do. I think when, as we get the new person, whoever it is, that we need to sit down and clarify this.
Yeah.
But I don't see today where we're going to get a long ways until we reach that point.
Well, I just, I just...
Is that, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I want to refer to a colleague who was a former commissioner. What do you think?
We have always had a good relationship with Road and Bridge and the county. And Roger, the airport, I don't remember now what priority is, but Roger Squire, Mr. Squire, would come out to hit the school bus, which, by the way, that stops changes children move and grow up and graduate. He'd come out, and he'd hit airport road, county road, whatever that is, come up, and then he'd get the runway, and, which he still does. And the other day, when he was really late, and we didn't talk about this in board meeting, but advisory board yesterday, the answer, too, was they were putting sand down for the school buses, which we didn't know. But back to the relationship with Road and Bridge, I wouldn't say anything to them just yet, until you get your new road boss, and they've got their feelings and things, but we do have two pieces of equipment that we use to move snow around, the gasoline dispensers, where you can't get a big truck. Roger gets the runway, road graders don't necessarily get all of, especially when the snow's wet, it'll plump up, and it freezes at night, it's like rock. So generally, somebody on the advisory board takes that yellow truck and goes out, knocks the rocks off of the frozen, off of that, if we can. Sometimes I'm out of town for health inspection, but there's other guys on the board now that can run that equipment and know what to do. They're very good at, including our chairman here.
Are you...
Tractor.
Are you comfortable with where we are with this?
So anyway, that's what I would do, continued support to keep the snow off. Bob Jolly, the airport quote manager, he's chairman of the advisory board, Bob's the airport manager, he's in charge of the notice to airmen, and it's his decision if he calls Mark Marietta and says we're going to put the snow to south.
How much snow can an airplane land in?
It depends on the aircraft and the pilot and command's ability to keep it on the runway. Four inches? I had an aircraft that we'd landed at four inches a lot.
But one or two inches is...
The one I'm flying now is not too good on snow. It's the stopping, once you start sliding, it's a stopping. It's bad, but a lot of times, there's snow on the runway, and, hey, we're, you know, how come you guys aren't moving the snow? And you go, who's going to be flying in this? You can't see across the highway, and it's still snowing. So you got to use a lot of common sense and the safety of the airport.
Yeah, if I may, Monty Lee landed in that snow, and when he pulled up in front of his hangar, and he's had to get wheel pants on that thing, and the left main wheel was sliding, because the snow had packed up in there, and if they'd done that on landing, it could have spun him...
But that's pilot responsibility, isn't it?
That's, he's the pilot in command, it's his choice. You can land, you can close an airport, and the pilot in command can still land on it if they want to. But if they ding their airplane, they can't come to the county and say, you didn't plow that snow. Well, did you read the notum? No, well...
Yeah, I mentioned that, too.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, the rest of this list is just the concerns that we need some direction on from the board sometime in the future.
Well, let's address this when you bring in your report.
Okay.
In February.
All right.
Because just like the latitude and fuel price, I think that's very clear, it's 50 cents.
Yeah, well, that's what we wanted to know, if that was going to stand, or if we're going to change it, or that sort of thing.
Okay. Car's parked out there, we turned that over to the sheriff, didn't we?
Yeah, and two of them are still out there.
Yeah? Okay. Super. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
But I assure you, we will...
Thanks for listening.
We will have our full support as we go forward.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Dallas.
Thanks.
The next item of business we have is the planning and zoning appointments, and the last, after we had the last meeting, Vic indicated that he wouldn't be able to be here, and we agreed to postpone it until the 31st. Is that agreeable with you folks?
Yes.
And I see we have a lot of information here that we didn't have before.
Yes.
The one place that I'll mention to you that I was not aware of, and we need to clarify this, when we have a, how do I say this? We sent out a letter as commissioners that we wanted the applications in by a specific date. In your regulations, you have a different date. And I think we have to be sure in the future that we coincide.
Our regulations say that the last day of December.
But, but as commissioners, we said this is it.
Okay, and I agree, but, but as our policy in the, in the resolution, and also the resolution that was dated 2012, I was, usually, the planning and zoning would take their money, and they would do an advertisement for the planning commission and the BZA. So I didn't even know the commissioners were doing the advertisement.
You didn't get an email from, from...
I seen the advertisement and the Tribune posted on Donna Hobby...
Did we send an email, Brenda, to department heads? We did, didn't we?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, well, that was our fault.
Okay, so, I'm still under the assumption that it's as we have always done, because we have a resolution, and we have our zoning resolution in place that governs the rules.
We will look at that as we go forward, because it's important that we do have clear communication. And I appreciate planning and zoning, I appreciate what you're doing, but ultimately, the decision, I think, rests with the commissioners, doesn't it?
Yes, that they serve at the pleasure of the commissioners, but I don't think that is the...
Well, I'm saying, if we want a different date, we need to notify...
You'll have to change the regs and the orders.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we need to make it, but we'll get into this next meeting, if you will, when we're here.
So what date are you saying?
Well, our meeting is scheduled, I believe, for the 31st, isn't it?
No, what date are you saying is differs from your date?
The date we set out, the deadline was the 29th.
That was the last business day.
Last business day of the year.
Okay, but now we're conflicting again.
I don't want to go there. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying. What I'm saying, we'll talk about all of this in our next meeting.
Okay, I'm just saying we're conflicting because we have a resolution stating that that was...
We will clear that up.
Okay.
And in terms of the board, I appreciate your concerns about Keith, and I see we can't have up to, up to nine members on the board, and I think we'll talk about that in our next meeting, too. So there's, you know, I think we got a lot of things to discuss, but I think, in respect to Vic, he asked that we, you know, do this when he was here.
Oh, I agree, he asked us to come to make sure that we got it postponed.
Well, that's interesting, because I got a message to you folks, I think, when the commissioners say they're going to do something, you can rest assured that we will.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? And we do appreciate the time that's all you folks put in. You've got a whole lot of information, we got a lot of things to go forward with, we're going to have some issues, just like the dark skies thing. You know, that's going to be a tough one. I don't, everybody's got a mercury vapors, had one for 20 or 30 years, and they like that, they like what they got. And when you go out to light a corral, you need to light a corral, you can't just light what's underneath the pole. But I think, you know, I fully support, this is, you folks are the ones that dig through the weeds and then bring it to us. Okay? Anything else? Okay. The next item of business we have is the Custer County Board of Health. I will entertain a motion to appoint the county commissioners as the Custer County Board of Health.
Salute.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
There's a second.
Okay, I'm going to ask Jackie, this is what we've done in the past, because you bring issues to the commissioners as the Board of Health.
Correct.
So we have historically, at least in some period of time, we, and that, we didn't make that appointment as us as the Board of Health and our other issues. So we're not setting precedents, we're following what we've done. Call for the question on the Thursday. Aye?
Aye.
Same sign, opposed. Motion carries. The next item we have is the Custer County Nurse Position. And we have a draft of the, of the position. We had hoped that maybe we could fill it internally. If it was a county employee that was a public health nurse, they would have had an opportunity to make an internal transfer. The only nurses we have have not been interested. Now, the next point is going to be, we finalize the position and then we advertise it. We have some questions on how far do we advertise? There's a whole thick packet of requirements from the, from the Health Department as to what's required, and, and we meet most of those. But again, we have our own qualifications here. So I would suggest that our commissioners, we can do one of two things. I don't know if you have a copy of this last draft? We may want to discuss this in detail later, or we can go through it now, but would be your preference.
I've gone through it at least.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks. I've, I've gone through it. However, I'm not an HR person, so it's beyond the scope of my expertise in any way whatsoever. So, I mean, it looked okay to me, but I think we ought to discuss it later date.
Okay, this has been discussed with Donna Hobby. Beth met with Donna and I and we went over it again, the reading and so forth. So that's, if you want to, let's, we need to get this out fairly soon. So let's, you want to postpone it?
I, I just need to know, this says last revised 12/21. I would just like to postpone it maybe and have a discussion or a workshop with them.
I suspect you might not have the last one. The one I have is last revised 12/30 of 2016.
I don't have that one either.
I don't have that one either. I've got 12/21.
Okay. We need to get that one.
Just had a quick question.
Sure.
About the appointments. It was table till today, does there need to be an action to table it to the 31st?
So we're, we're postponing it from the item today to the 31st. When we made it to do today, then after we finished, Vic might say, I can't be here.
Right.
Would you move it to the 31st?
Right, as a chairman, he needs to be.
And, and we will take no action. We're, we're done with any action that we would have taken and we postpone the whole matter.
But you might as well take it. According to Robert's Rules of Order, to postpone an item, there needs to be a motion and a second and a vote. So I move that we postpone that decision until the 31st.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, do you?
Thanks for keeping us honest.
I, I'm just going to say that because I, I've got one dated 12/21 that I would love to postpone.
All right, let's, let's get the latest ones and let's tentatively, we'll just leave this as unfinished business.
This, is this the 12? Do you have the right one?
Okay. The underfunded courthouse grant is, some actions we need to take here is that we have a report on the underfunded courthouse, but the report that we have was from the last grant money, identifying potential planning. The next step we go to is that we need to move forward. We have $148,000 grant, I think it is, for planning, engineering type things. And I think at this point in time, we need to, I recommend that we send out a request for proposals to a list that we've got, and that as soon as we can, that we review those and make a decision, so that we're in a position to start to move forward because this, this is, the clock is ticking and we have, we'll be reapplying again probably in October, November? When would we reapply, Mike? It was October, wasn't it, this last fall, for the underfunded courthouse grants?
Deadline's August, isn't it?
No, that's before, the underfunded courthouse is before the court security grants, so.
I was going to say that's in August.
August.
August. Okay, so, but my point I'm making is that we have to move forward in a timely manner so we can get a firm hired and so that we can get a firm, have time to do the work, get the reports back to us. And this will include, as I understand it, from, from general discussions, is that, that firm will, I think from our standpoint, everybody has input into it, we look at it, we talk about it, we'll have a series of workshops on it, and then we'll move forward from there.
Are you, are you going to do an RFP for, what are you doing it for, remodel, an addition, or a new building?
Right now, we're going to do it for the remodel. And the reason, and we can talk about that, the reason that the last board made that decision, we felt we would come closer to getting the remodel one than we would going for five or six or seven million dollars.
Just have a question with regards to this $148,000 grant. Is that what it has to be spent by August?
We.
No, that's for, I think for fiscal year 2017, it has to be spent during that time, but if you're going to apply for grants for 2018, you have to have it, you have to have those plans completed and submitted by August, so.
This last year, we got them, we got the report on that, from the previous grant, we got the report and we had 10 days to get another one back to them. So I think it's important that we, the only action required today is that we say, okay, we're, we're going to send out an RFP and identify where they're going and have a fairly short period of time.
Is the DLR group on that?
Pardon me?
Is the DLR group on that request for bid, your request for bid list?
Brenda has a list.
I haven't, I was going to say, I've not, I haven't seen it, so we probably need to review that.
Do you have a list that we sent to last time, Brenda?
I do.
We have the firm you were talking about, the consulting firm we used last time?
No, that's Anderson Hollis.
Yeah, but who are, DLRs?
DLR's another group that specializes in police departments, jails, courthouses. They, they're the ones that did the Pueblo County Justice Center, they just did that, they did Lakewood, the DLR's done several.
If you have any additions you want to send out, just get ahold of Brenda and we'll be sure that they get copies of it.
This is the rest that we.
The intent is that we do have a, when we sent out the last proposal, we tried to limit those who had experience working on courthouses. From a security standpoint.
May I ask that we also, commissioners get a copy of that to review before it actually goes out?
Oh, before it goes out?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you, we'll have letters that need to be signed by all the commissioners, bid request letters.
Okay.
Yes, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I suggest that we put that on the agenda for the 31st so we can get that approved at that point, so we don't waste any more time? I agree, time is of the essence, we need to move it forward.
I suggest that we need to move quicker than that.
Okay.
Because by the time we wait till the 31st and we give them 10 days, and then we come back with another meeting, it's going to be the first of March before we really get somebody on board.
So what, do we need a workshop?
Or we can approve it tentatively, actually, we can approve it as it is with the proviso that we could either add or delete some of the recipients of the proposal.
We just, we just send it to everybody that we think is interested.
I think that's fine, I wouldn't know who they are anyway personally.
But I think all it is, is, and Brenda, maybe you can draft something there that we can look at maybe later, before we adjourn today even. It shouldn't be very long, we just request, the language could be very similar to what we did on the underfunded. I think, Mike, what do you think? It doesn't have to be a big.
I agree, you're just doing a request for proposals for the next step in the project.
And then they can contact for more details, is that?
Okay, then I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and we approve the request for proposals to be sent out as soon as practical, once the paperwork is done and we can sign it. At that point, it goes out.
I'll second that motion.
Moving, seconded, we move forward as soon as we can with the, with the proposal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. I really think, and I'm, I don't mean to push this, but I was, Shannon was aware of it, but I've been involved with this since the first presentations, and I met with Mike early on with Lynn when you were working on the proposals. And I really feel the time is of the essence, that we get a firm identified and that we can move forward as soon as we can.
Well, I would like to add a couple things because you're, you're asking, Mike, there's a pain in my self, there's a pain as well, but this is Lisa Rowe, she's actually the court administrator for the 11th Judicial District, and she has more knowledge about this than probably any of us, because this is what she does, and she has the insight and the knowledge about how the processes work. But I, I want to add a couple things, so, you know, this is, this is going to be considerable money that's spent, and so it's going to be, you know, from the public's view, we're going to have to make sure we get good, accurate information out there. And I just want to go on the record, and I'm not trying to be disparaging or whatever, but there's an article in the paper this week from the trip that is, that, that pictures the use of the courthouse, and it's, I'm trying to, because we're on the record, I'm trying to parse my words here, it's so inaccurate that it's disgraceful. So I'm going to give you a picture of January of 2017 and how much the court is used. In the month of January, we have 20 business days, 15 of those business days, there is some type of court in session in the courthouse. In the month of January, there's 200 people slated to appear in court in the month of January alone. The picture painted in the paper, if I'm a, if I'm a reader of the newspaper and I don't know better, I'd be like, I don't want you to spend $50 on the courthouse because it's not justified, that this is, if I were you, I would not be happy because you're going to get hammered for wanting to spend $1,000 on the courthouse. For how this is painted, that it's not, it's not used, and that's inaccurate. And, and it's, it stayed in there, we don't really know how much the court, absolutely we know. I mean, all you have to do is ask Mike, he, he can give you those numbers within about 10 minutes, but you have to ask, you can't assume. And, and that wasn't done by anyone in reference to the paper, and, and so it's, I think, I can't express enough to you that we have to put out accurate information to the readership so that they are well informed, because otherwise you are going to come under intense scrutiny and in turn, I'm going to get some too, because the court, you know, as soon as they say court, they think of the sheriff's office. So I highly encourage you that if you get asked a question, I'm sure, just say, hey, you know, give me, give me a half an hour and I'll call you back, and you can call me, I can put you in contact with whoever needs to know and you can get that information, just so you don't get beat up.
Well, I think we will also have, critically, we have some workshops on the court, on what we're doing.
Yeah.
And explain to the public why we're doing it and where we're going with it and why it's necessary.
Right.
I would like to ask at this time, Jordan, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
No, Mr. Byerly is answering all of them, so this is, well, if you guys are going to have that workshop, I think that's important to, because it's, you know, there's a lot of information that we just can't find. So I agree with Mr. Byerly and I'll make some.
I'm not trying to be.
No, no, no.
I don't want, I don't want to go there, I just wanted to be sure that he had an opportunity, if he had anything he wanted to ask.
As I said, we need further study, you know, I said there, the clicker, that, that's, that's not accurate.
And it varies today.
I work for Mr. Michelson, sometimes it's packed in there and sometimes.
Well, we appreciate that you used to be a legal aide, but now you're a newspaper reporter.
Yep, so we need to keep at it, so.
Thank you. Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I would just add to any, anything that I can do to help facilitate any information, we'd be happy to do that for the commissioners. And there is a gentleman with a state court administrator's office that is more than, he, he basically helps build courthouses and remodels all across the state, and so he's more of a consultant, he's not going to come in and tell you guys how you should do it, he doesn't know your community, but just know, he is a resource and he would be happy to come present, be available to answer questions, and, and he knows a whole lot more than even I do in that regard.
That's where I think it's important, if we, when we have a workshop, whatever, we have resources there to answer those questions.
Absolutely.
You got a question?
Yep, I have a question. I'm, I'm not familiar with you, I'm sorry, meeting you for the first time. Are you a local citizen?
I, I take care of the 11th Judicial District, so I, actually, my main office is in Canyon City, so I serve Custer, Chaffee, Fremont and Park Counties.
So we have your contact information.
Yes.
Now, are you part of the DA's office?
No, I'm with the state, the.
You just have the same area?
Same area, yeah, same judicial district, but I, I'm the administrator for the courts.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a lady that we work with for.
Judge Murphy, the chief judge.
Okay.
That, this is, this is who we work with, like for Mike does for courthouse security and those type of things.
Lisa basically chairs the courthouse security committee and keeps us organized and makes sure that, and we understand, like, you know, with the grant monies, she can say, like, hey, listen, like, like the elevator, for example, the grant won't pay for the elevator because it doesn't specifically apply to the courts.
Well, I think you're, I think you're stepping beyond the scope right now.
Right, no, I'm just.
Because you're saying, just a minute, you're saying it won't pay for it. We don't know that it won't pay for it, because we're looking at a second courtroom in the basement as an immediate need. And it's storage for legal facilities down there, because if you just demonstrate it, we're fully booked here. So as we expand on the next step of it, those are the things that, that we'll be looking at. I think, it's, I may not, I agree right now, I say, well, it doesn't fit well, but look at the, look at what we're doing there, and it may very well fit by the time we get our next plan put together.
Right, and then we're getting the weeds, but.
Okay, now, appreciate the introduction, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anything else on you in the funding court?
I was just going to ask, basically, your contact information, were you invited here for, by the sheriff?
Yes, he told me about the meeting today.
Both of you, thank you very much.
So tell me about your committee.
Which, the, which committee, sorry.
Well, the one that Shannon referred to, that you're going to have a meeting on the 17th, the courthouse security committee. Who, who appoints that committee?
I, I think probably officially, it gets appointed by the chief judge. Historically, I've been in this position just a little over a year, and I think in Custer County, one of kind, one of the things that was passionate to me is to make sure each county in the judicial district is served and not just Fremont County, because that's where the, there's more business in judicial, but, so I kind of revived those meetings in conjunction with Mike and the sheriff. The judges are a part of that, so the clerk of court is a part of that, and then usually there's a commissioner a part of that too, if I need to, you know, in terms of appointment per se, I think usually there's, we're lucky to get interest from somebody, so, you know, in each location, it's a little bit different. Sometimes the facilities person with the county is a part of it, sometimes the fire chief is a part of it, so, but I think officially, it's a, it's decided on by the chief judge, but I don't know that it's inclusive.
Could you, could you, I don't need to now, but would you go back and maybe bring that documentation so we understand it?
Sure.
Because it's a committee that, that can have impact on what we spend, which are county expenditures.
Right, so we have an underfunded court grant, which we just talked about, and then there's also a security grant. And the court security committee and, you know, we work together to determine what safety needs are there in each courthouse and prioritize though, those with our grant request.
But, but we have to approve and sign the request for the grants, to commissioners.
And so does the chief judge.
One does.
Yeah, one.
One commissioner that's on the committee. So the chief judge has to sign it, the sheriff has to sign it, and one committee, and commissioner has to sign it.
I think we need to clarify that, because when we have.
It's in the document.
I want to see that.
Okay.
I want to see what it is, if I've not been aware of it before.
Right, because you weren't on the committee.
Pardon me?
Right, because you weren't on the committee, so you.
Let me, let me finish, please. We have a committee that I get an email from you, that we need to be doing this, we don't
We have a committee that I get an email from you that we need to be doing this, we don't know about the courthouse, what are we going to be doing next? And we already are doing a lot of this and I want to see how this committee fits in. I want to see how it's set, who's responsible for it and we'll go from there. But as a county, as a county policy for our grants, we have to prove it as a board of commissioners and then the chairman signs the grant. That's the way our county grants work. That's the way the courthouse security grant works. It has to be a commissioner decision. You sit there and smile.
I just want to...
But that's, we've done it every time.
So, I think technically...
So, why didn't you know about it then?
Your order, Mr. Sheriff.
I'm just saying.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Technically, I think that, you know, the chief judge appoints me to be in charge of that, but I'll give you all the documentation.
That's fine, if it's a judicial committee, that's great. But when we come down to dollar expenditures, we have to sign if it's a county grant, just like the courthouse grant.
True.
We had to have a special meeting for Kit and Lynn and I to sign the courthouse, underfunded courthouse grant to get it in. If one person could have signed it, we wouldn't have had that meeting.
Right, because that's a county grant. Agreed. Whereas like the security grant is more of a, it's a judicial grant where we receive monies for Mike's...
And who administers it?
The courts do. The judicial, it's a state grant.
But who pays the bills?
I understand what you're saying, that it's county funds that then is reimbursed by the state. So, I mean, I fully understand you want to review that as a group and absolute, absolutely.
Appreciate it, didn't mean to get rough with you.
No, that's fine, I mean, while you have discussion.
But I'd just like to have a further understanding of this. So, would we be looked through, looked as a pass-through for this signing off?
We are.
That's what we, that would be what we are.
But we're looked at as a pass-through, but we also have to have adequate monies in our treasury.
Understood.
To handle those because sometimes a reimbursement isn't, it may be two weeks, it may be longer than that for a reimbursement. So, it's our responsibility that...
Just add this to the list of other pass-throughs for my understanding. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Help us on that.
Thank you for coming.
Could you, with this gentleman that you mentioned in Denver, could he send us a list of other potential bidders?
Absolutely.
Maybe just forward that to Brenda?
Okay.
That work for you, Shannon?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, I didn't realize, again, that's why I brought Lisa because she knows more than I do about this.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you for your time to be here.
And one more thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. So, there is a meeting on the 17th. If one of you, and it could be more than one, if one of you, you know, if you have the opportunity to come, it's because there's a lot of good discussion and then we'll have, the goal will be to have all that paperwork for one of you that you can bring back to the group as well.
February 17th and where is it, what time?
We do it right here in the courtroom.
Can I talk?
Is it 11?
I don't have it.
I've got it.
Bring my calendar.
I've got it here. That would be on February the 17th and I guess I don't have it on here.
It is at, oh, I don't know. Neither.
Courthouse Security.
It's usually at 11. We normally do it at 11.
At 11 in the courtroom?
Yeah, we're here.
If it's not, if it changes, just let us know because I'd like to be there.
I'll go back and I'll check in.
Thank you very much. I'll put it down at 11, I'll just assume that's right. You don't need to notify me unless it's different.
Now, we've kind of moved from one to the other here, but we were talking about the underfunded courthouse grant and now we've moved into the court security committee appointments.
And that's the security meeting, but we talked about all of it just, you know, to foster conversation in those committee meetings.
And usually, all the same players are at both meetings, so sometimes that intertwines a little bit.
But were you specifically asking for a commissioner to be part of this committee?
Yeah, well, there has, so, you know, please understand, so this is only starting my third year, but in all of our meetings before, there was always a commissioner there. Commissioner Adaby was there.
Mike?
Well, I can add to that a little bit. I've been on this since the ground floor and the way the state court security grant works...
Could you speak up just a little bit, please?
Okay, the way the state court security grant works is administered by the state judicial and they would like to have what they call teams for each county. And that team consists of one county commissioner, the chief judge, and the sheriff. And that's how the grant is talked about, it's how it's administered, what are the needs, because they're different for every county and every county meets different criteria as far as the state judicial is concerned. They evaluate you on population, there's several criteria that they evaluate you on. And it makes you eligible for certain parts of the grant, how the monies are distributed and how much. And that's how we've been able to purchase security cameras and panic buttons and security glass on the front of the court doors, that's through that money, through the grant. That money is generated through court funds. When there's a court fine, all across the state, there's a $5 court security fee that's added to their surcharges. That's where the, this grant position gets funded. That's on a reimbursement basis. We do a quarterly, every quarter, I submit a quarterly report to the sheriff, he submits it to the state judicial and the chief judge sees it, whatever member of the commissioners that is on the team may or may not see that particular report, but then those monies for that quarter are reimbursed back to county general on a quarterly basis. So, one of the items we purchased this year, or requests, was security glass for the court clerks. We were lucky enough to get funded in two different manners for that, but that's money that the county doesn't spend to enhance the security on the building. Some years there's money for it, sometimes there isn't. So, if I see a need, like security cameras, we figure out what's the need, what's the cost, get some prices, we submit that in October with the grant along with the monies that fund this security position. And when that money goes in, or when those requests go in, then they notify us by the, usually by the end of October, what was approved and what isn't. If we get approved for security equipment, then we have until the end of the following fiscal year to purchase that equipment and then those, that money is reimbursed back to the county when we submit those vouchers to the state judicial.
So, you said that there was the commissioners, the sheriff, who was the other, the third one, the judge?
Chief judge.
Chief justice?
There's three members...
Chief judge on Fremont County.
The chief judge of the 11th Judicial District. So, each county has a three-member court security...
Chief judge in the judicial district. Yeah, okay, thank you.
And those three people then sign the grant request for whatever funds you deem and then it's reviewed and then you get approved. And that also pays for Mike's salary, benefits, all his costs to the county.
Now, I'm going to ask another question and maybe you can answer this. We got funded twice for that window, security glass. Do we automatically just send the other part of it back or can we spend it for some other things related to court security? How does that work, Chris?
Yeah, my understanding is that you would need to ask for, to identify what you would spend it on instead of the glass and they would need to approve that. So, it'd be kind of like a budget change, but I think definitely the money's there, so I think, you know, I can't answer it.
Mike, can you find something that we need?
We already have.
Well, we have discussed this and what we think the best course of action is the funding that came through the court security grant, we should purchase the window with because we requested, this is the third year we requested that and we finally received it and I think those monies are better spent in that direction. Now, we're probably going to run over what the bid cost was because we're running into some obstacles with the intercom system, finding one that's going to work and so there's going to be a little overrun on the monies that were funded for that. Maybe we can take out of the monies that came through the underfunded grant to cover those. We're also looking at upgrading the locks for the doors in the court system.
That's great, just so we know.
And so, that's what we're looking to do and if we can do, if they'll allow us to do that, then what we don't spend, we can...
But the responsibility of spending that only relies back on us as commissioners.
Right.
So, in your monthly report for commissioners, you would just give us an update?
Yeah. I just try, because I've never been on the agenda for, you know, just like when you have other department heads doing reports, so I just try to keep you updated. I'll send you an email through Brenda.
Okay.
Would you like to be on the agenda?
That's your call, please, sir.
Well, the reason you're not is because you're elected official. I think from our standpoint, we would appreciate the updates.
Absolutely, I'm not opposed to that.
I would welcome it.
I would appreciate that also.
Yeah, no, I'm not opposed to that at all.
Super, thank you.
And, you know, and with my schedule, if I'm not available at one meeting, I would just let Brenda know and we could move it to the next.
Or send Chris over or whatever.
Sure, yeah, we could do that.
Or Mike.
Absolutely.
Super. Okay, anything else on the courthouse security appointments? The next item I have is an MOU we have from the Custer County School District addressing our evacuation plans and if you look in your packet, I think you have a... Thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir.
Did the school board...
No, I was just going to let you know, the school board wants to make some changes. So, I've had a few emails since the board meeting with Mark Paylor. They have concerns over the copiers and just the use of supplies, that kind of stuff. And I told Mark that what we did at the fire station when we had our EOC there was we didn't use their copiers, we brought our own.
Did you folks find that?
I found it.
What page is that?
Agreement for emergency use facility?
Yes.
Okay, just go ahead. I'm finding my piece of paper now.
So, I told them what we did with the fire station was that anything we did use, like we took some copy paper, we used, you know, trash bags, toilet paper, you know, some of the kitchen things and I said we replaced all that and I said anything that the county would use from the perspective of running a shelter, I said I don't see a big need for that, but if we did, we would replace that. The other issue that Monty Lee has that he wants to address is the kitchen use and I think it came back up, from my understanding is the same church camp was evacuated twice and so some of these issues might be specifically to that, but that some pots and pans, utensils, things like that have walked off and then at one point, a freezer was left not closed right and they lost some food. So, I'm going to follow up with Monty and Mark on that, but typically, if we're running a shelter, I think we could be working with Paul Sage and the Disaster Assistance Center to bring over pre-made food because they have the commercial kitchen, so I think we could probably recommend to the school that any use of the kitchen facility like that would be limited to, you know, maybe doing some cleanup, but not using their stuff and that that cost share agreement would be with the church camper who, you know, in the case of that camp, both times they brought all their food and they prepared it and so that, we're really not a party to that.
We really got took on that because this is a shelter.
Right.
And when they were first evacuated for the Duckett fire, they permitted them to continue their camp out of the school. Now, this time, they just assumed and they continued their camp out of the school, which is not the purpose of an emergency facility.
Right.
So, we, they had to go back and we said, "No, you got to negotiate that with the school board or with the superintendent" and then they charged them for the use of it. But we need to be clear that this is emergency only, it isn't an older location.
What, where did the volunteers fall under using the firehouse facility? Because there was a whole group that was using that kitchen too.
Well, that was the ladies auxiliary primarily and they, you know, some of the folks that were bringing in food fed us, you know, and that was Dave Tonzing's call to locate the EOC jointly with the ICP, which I think was a very good call. I think it really kept the information better. So, what happened was after the fire, to follow up on what Bob said, some people started posting on Facebook that they thought it was real unfair that the church camp got charged for the extra three or four days, but the school did work out a cost share agreement with them and said, "Look, you know, we're fine with helping out for an operational period or two, but the idea of an evacuation center is, it's until you can go somewhere else." And it's not for, you know, it'd be one thing if it was residents of the county and we had a sheltering that ran on, but if it's not, if it's a church camp or, you know, other activity where people are up, then that commercial activity really needs to either send the kids home with their parents, you know, you're waiting for that reunification piece, but at that point, you know, the MRC and the evacuation center is done and if the camp or the other activity wants to continue, that's now a commercial use and they have to do a cost share agreement. So, Gail and Mark and I worked on the new agreement.
The new one.
The old agreement had the old superintendent and the old public health nurse and so what Mark and I elected to do was make it between the county and the school and not get too deep in the weeds on whether it's public health or MRC or OEM or, because it's really the county asking, "We need to provide this service."
There's another issue with that is that we are now competing with any private entity or company.
Right.
A business that could host them, that they could provide space for.
If Horn Creek, if they had gone up to Horn Creek, they'd have had to pay Horn Creek something. So, they did, I think they paid.
You see what I'm saying?
It was pretty nominal. I think it was $250 a day or something that they paid to keep their camp there. And so, what we've tried to do in this new MOU is say, "Well, just for the evacuation period, this is the agreement between the county and the schools, pull that trigger and say, 'We've got to evacuate, we've got to do it now.'" And they've been great about that. But anything beyond that, this document will say that entity would have a cost share agreement of their own. So, what we're trying to do is just say, "Okay, if we pull that trigger at a county level, what's our responsibility? Do we have to, you know, is there a cost share? Do we need to pay utilities? And they've been very generous, so there's really nothing in there. They just want to make sure that they're not going to let us have full run of, you know, the kitchen and items that are missing and, you know, and so MRC did go in and they had to clean the facility afterwards, you know, they had to do all those things or we could have been tasked with, and then that went into our hours for the cost share for the fire too, because anything we do, and there was no cost share on Junkins, so that's a bad example, but there would have been because those would all be volunteer hours.
But let's take, let's take the Duckett fire, when they were evacuated there. They basically filled the facility except for that east gym, but they tie up most of the cots we've got available for emergency, most of our emergency supplies. If that fire had continued on and we'd have another 100 or 150 county residents evacuated, we're at capacity. Where do we put them?
Right.
Because we have those resources, those emergency resources are tied up in a non-emergency activity.
And we could look at doing a cost share on the cots when those cots are used beyond that too. Or we could have the caveat that if these cots have to be taken, but that's, so we did have, we have 50 cots that are, belong to the county. MRC has a trailer with 50 cots. We had to bring in the Red Cross to bring the next 100, I believe it was, up. We had, you know, that, the evacuation with the Junkins fire, we had about an hour's notice when Shannon pulled the trigger with the type 3 team and said, "We're evacuating camp and we're doing it now," because it was a great time, they'd eaten dinner, they were all dressed. It wasn't like the time a couple of years before where some of them were in the swimming pool with swimsuits and some of them were on the hiking trails.
It was on the Hayden Pass fire.
Hayden Pass, yeah, yeah. I'm getting, my fires are so confused.
So, and excuse me, I just want to make sure, was this table part of that?
No, that is part of the cook plan. That's the next side.
All right, okay. With regards to Facebook, when you said that there were comments on Facebook, do you put a comment out on Facebook making the public aware of where we are in time with things like that so that, I mean, I'm not sure the response that you're talking about.
I think at that, on that particular, on the Hayden Pass fire, I think Michelle Tilletson or somebody involved at the school put a post back and it wasn't officially on the emergency operations page because I was not up to speed and then Gail and I had a talk, you know, because this, again, our part of it was over except for cleaning up afterwards. But it is important in the public information arena to try to correct inaccurate information as quickly as possible.
I'm just asking if we have any sort of communication policy set in place because of assumptions that are made in the community.
Well, the, we have a, we have a social media policy at the county that the sheriff's office and OEM and the tourism board and folks need to adhere to on social media, but the most important thing is trying to read, trying to correct inaccurate information. We've seen it time and time again.
But these basically, we sign it because it's a county agreement, but basically, it's her responsibility to implement all of these things.
And...[1760.12]
And the only thing that I did during the fire, during the Junkins fire, we had to sit there and authorize money every day.
Okay. And so what happens, and it's part of the Emergency Operations Plan, which is the next plan, but when the trigger is pulled, whether Shannon pulls it, Public Health pulls it, I mean, there's different caveats. I could pull the trigger, but then, yeah, the MOU is saying that I can now tell Paul Sage or Michelle Tillotson with the Fire Department or somebody to set up that shelter. I'm the one who has to make the official call to the Red Cross and order more cots, or my backup, it has to be somebody at the county level. But the MOU, I mean, it's pretty much a non-binding legal agreement, the school's been great. The only thing they've asked for is that, so this document is...
Would you like to rewrite this a little bit and bring it back to us later?
Well, they're going to rewrite it and I'm gonna take a look at it. So I will meet with Monty. I would table it until they have their next meeting, and then when, I'm gonna attend their next meeting and I'm gonna try to get a draft from Monty before. But I guess the one thing would be is if you saw anything that you were uncomfortable with, it's probably time to let them know.
Do you want me to, I went through this agreement, there was just one issue that I had. Not an issue, I really need clarification, I thought there was, it appeared to be a discrepancy. In one of it, it says the facilities are designated as potential evacuation sites, so the purpose of this agreement, Custer County Consolidated Schools. And it says that in no event shall Emergency Management or Custer County be liable for reimbursement of costs to the school district. And in another area, it says that...
And is that in regard to the use by, like the...
It just says cost obligation and it goes on to the school.
This is in Section E?
Yeah.
And the only thing I was concerned about, I didn't even have a problem, until I got to P where it says that the costs are going to be appropriated by the Board of Commissioners for Custer County. And I was trying to see, is there an expense or is there non-expense? Because to me, this appeared to be in contradiction of each other.
Well, if there were expenses, like, and I'll go back and use the Junkins Fire and the fire station. We did have, and John Paquette, or, yeah, John has us billing fire expenses, but we did have a lot of expenses to, and it was nominal compared to like the Beulah Hills Fire. But we had expenses to replace pop and toilet paper and coffee cups and all kinds of things at the fire station. And actually, what we did was we went and bought that and then we turned it in. And so that's coming, the county's paying for that. So the one section you're referencing, and I'd have to look, but there might be a section that is specific to the commercial use of people like Horn Creek and Rainbow Trail. And in that sense, we should have no obligation, and I've gotta look at the context.
Let me give this to you.
Okay, and I'll just run a copy and give it back to you.
If I may interject here.
That's all, I was confused.
Yeah.
Sorry.
When we say the county is responsible, this cost is a cost associated with the emergency event.
That's what I was...
So the emergency event is a cost share between federal, state, and county. So if it comes down to a county, this may be reimbursed under the cost share from the state, because it was a state emergency. But ultimately, if it wasn't reimbursed, the final buck comes back to the county.
Okay.
That's, did I summarize that correctly?
Yeah, it's part of the emergency.
Is that that $5,000 that we talked about?
It would be part of that cost share agreement. The difference is that expense is not like, I'm ordering dumpsters right now. That's an expense at the end of the fire that, okay, we've got to replace this, so, you know.
It's also, it's different, I think. And the reason I say it's different is that we had to come in and authorize, we authorized $5,000 a day, because we felt if it went beyond that, we needed to know what it was being stinted for, so we didn't authorize, you know, $50,000. Okay, if we had to buy fuel, or if we had to buy this or buy that, something, an immediate expense that the fire had to have to fight, we authorized the expenditure of that amount if they had to have immediate cash to do it.
Okay.
Is that a fair statement?
I missed a little bit, I turned to read, I'm sorry. I shouldn't be multitasking.
Well, when we, we have to sign every day, we sign the authorization up to $5,000, and that was for immediate expenses that had to be covered.
Yeah, that was anything that the ESFA would be ordering right there.
And this, this would be post-event.
Most likely, or it could be during the event, like the fire station where we were running out of soda and somebody ran down and bought it, but then we have to do it again.
But that's the $5,000.
Yeah.
But this here, where the commissioners will come back, that's something that we do once we determine it.
That's extra.
And I think what you did during Junkins was you signed for four or five days and we didn't have any more signatures, but that didn't mean my costs didn't keep coming in for the next couple of weeks. And really, and I've got a sheet and Donna can give it to you too, but I think our expenses right now are under like $2,500, which is nothing. I mean, Pueblo County, when I worked in their EOC, it was, and I did resource MOB, I was authorized to order, to spend up to $5,000 in any transaction per day. So it was a big difference. So if I was ordering epinephrine, which I did, you know, that was like three grand on one order. And, you know, so, you know, thankfully, our public health has, they'll actually dose it and have it.
But at the same time, though, we had a guy that was trying to set up porta potties out here.
Right.
And if I had said yes, that was a decision that would have come back to the county, because it wasn't going through Fire Command. It had to go through Fire Command.
And part of my work plan, and I talked to Donna before I agreed to do it on the state side, was to work the finance piece and actually document those procedures. And even if they change over time, it'll give all of us, and Bob and I are both starting out, this is how we did it last time, so we'll develop the procedures of this way, and it doesn't mean we can't modify them, but yeah. And the guy, the porta potty guy, he had, he's known statewide to just dump them off and send the bill and nobody knows who ordered them. And there's a whole different piece too of, you know, you start out with a local emergency. Well, until you sign that disaster declaration and then you delegate to the, which then it became a type federal.
Well, we delegate to the state.
And then it feds.
Yeah, and then it went, and then, yeah, it did, it really went to the state. The state, yeah, exactly. And then there's a lot of pieces. And then the federal Type III team then delegated it to the Type I team, and then it went backwards. And what made it easy with Junkins is the fire started early. We had the disaster declaration and the delegation piece done by noon. And the governor, and so did Pueblo, and the governor had his piece in and they backed it up to 7:00 AM. So even after that, you have your own piece that you're responsible for. And sheltering is always going to be your responsibility. So even though it's federal, sheltering is your responsibility. Then there are different levels in there. So even though, and there's a whole different system for fire ordering resources than the state ordering resources, it's complicated and I'm learning a lot.
But I would like us to have a workshop with you and these two, so we go, I mean, it's a... The thing that saved me, literally, was the fact that I had basically shadowed the Hayden Pass Fire.
Right.
From day one.
And I think that was a good move.
I drove to Slida every day, met every day, it was a part of the discussions every day. I drove down to Canyon City when the commissioners declared it a disaster. I knew what that process was. So when I, this hit me, yeah, the Junkins Fire just, you know, it just flowed along the map very smoothly. Because I knew what to expect next.
And so this is, you know, this MOU is directly to follow up of, okay, this was an area we needed to improve on. The people that signed the original document aren't even there yet. I'll take a little closer look at this and get back to you, Jay, and make sure...
Basically, what was written, I know you're gonna rewrite some of it, but what I read, except for that point where I thought, is this a contradiction? And it may not be, I think Commissioner Kavner may have explained to me what the difference is. And if it's not, but overall, I thought it was an...
And what we had done, we actually took Donna McDonald's document that was with the old superintendent, Chris Sully, I think, and we had rewritten that thing, and it was so convoluted that I reached out to the Chapey County Manager and I said, what do you have? And he sent me this, and we added the one paragraph about our commercial use part. And so, and both, I was really pleased, but Mark was like, yeah, this is a much better starting point. So that's the other thing, is not reinventing the wheel.
Is it your responsibility on the 5K that's allocated, that could be daily? Do you actually fill out the voucher for that?
It goes into a web EOC system. And what we did in the Beulah Hills Fire was they had a paper, it wasn't a traditional voucher, but they had a paper and you had to sign off on it if it was over your limit. So they had a process, and I think we'll do something similar. I'm like Bob, the, being involved in the Hayden Pass Fire and then working the Beulah Hills Fire really helped me be ready for this fire, and I think it would, and then Christie being here really helped too. But the Joe, Joe Lobiondo's doing that annual operating plan, I invited you all to that.
Now, Joe is the State Fire Prevention and Control.
Right, you got it.
But they work on Control and well on Prevention.
So they do an annual agreement every year. And what Joe did last year was he sat down with, after the meeting, and then this document will have to be approved by the commissioners in a meeting. But Joe met with Dave Tomzing, myself, and Shannon Byerly, and he walked us through the process of, this is how you sign these delegations. And then we did that in the academy too, and in the academy, we had a piece where the disaster starts out at the town. And I was the county, but I had my delegation ready to go, but until the town signs their disaster declaration and delegates to the county, then it can't come to you to go to the state, to go to the feds.
Another factor we had, Brenda went out early on. And you were there, what, Brenda, a full day?
Two days.
Two days.
Yeah.
Was there helping out where needed to be, but was also our liaison as things were happening. So we had, because all this stuff hits, sometimes you're shorthanded. So she was there to back up what we needed from the county side.
We had four Homeland Security employees from the state helping, we had a volunteer from Pueblo helping, we had Jill Filer from the...
But that was not until the second or third day.
Oh, they were there the first day, I think even Bruce got there on Monday afternoon, so. One, Christie's counterpart, the San Luis Valley Regional Manager, he stayed for five days. That's why we went over to visit them in Alamo, so last week, at their request, to repay the favor.
When is that, that meeting coming up?
The next school board meeting, it was a week late because of the holidays, so I believe it's the second Tuesday of February. Oh, and the AOP meeting is what you're asking about? That would have been the school board meeting. The AOP meeting is, is it the 10th? I gotta look at my calendar.
I don't have that in yet.
It's, oh, it's next week, it's Tuesday, the 24th, at the fire station.
Oh, what time?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
Probably 10 to noon is what I'm gonna guess. It'll be more than an hour, and there'll be several other people there, Cindy French will come up and a few people. But that'll be a good one, and then the other one that I emailed you...
I would suggest that you can, that you be there, just to get a feel.
The other one, and I don't know, I mean, because really it's a workshop, you're gonna bring it back to your meeting, so unless you see a conflict, there's no decisions made, you're just reviewing language. He said he'd send the document out this weekend, so you'll have it before Tuesday, not a great time before. And then the other piece was the class that Christie wants to teach, the G401 or 402. That's the other part that's really gonna kind of get your head wrapped around some of the steps that have to take place in a disaster, and, you know, it's gonna happen, this is real. It's probably gonna, you know, we're a mess out there, it could happen really quickly. And the flood side too, you know, the recovery side and...
And when is that, D401, 402 meeting?
I had suggested a couple of dates, and you said you were fine, and you're the only one I've heard back from.
I have to apologize, I met with Chuck, I could not get into my email, because there was a section on security that he had to resolve. So I'm just now going through my emails, so I apologize for being late, but I'll catch up.
And I think I was suggesting January, I mean, February 23rd or 24th already, yeah. So if you can check your calendar or something.
Okay, I'll check.
I would say the sooner the better.
On the 24th, I have the AOP Division of Fire Prevention.
Of January, but I, this...
January.
Yeah, we were trying to do the...
And you were looking February?
February for the G, I believe it's 402, but yeah, that's a short week, because Monday's a holiday. So, and I don't know what your, I think I looked and they didn't see any...
What date do you have?
I was recommending the 23rd or the 24th in the morning. And if you want the certificate, it's a four-hour course. My recommendation is your time is more valuable than that, let's do the condensed version for two hours.
Well, I don't know, let me respond to that. Have either of you had any, this is instant command training, right?
This is the government officials' training.
Training, that's what I mean.
It's not the 100 and 700.
No, no, but if neither one of you have been through the incident command process, I suggest that you try to consider maybe the four hours, if you don't have the concept of how that works. In my case, I didn't do it, because I've been through all that training in Arizona.
And it's your, it's your call. I want to, you know, we're gonna invite the new town councils and any, like Kelly Camp or any other elected officials, but this is intended for you, so I'm gonna make it be what the three of you want it to be, and everybody else is invited.
Well, I'll just tell you, my feeling is the more education I can get, the better. So if I'm gonna learn more at four hours than two hours, that's not a significant time.
This is gonna be the only chance you're gonna have to get any formal training before we have an emergency.
That four-hour one is different than the...
No, well, you can make it four hours on that.
You can on these, okay.
So you'll just tell us.
You just tell me what date, if the two of you would look at your schedules, I just, I know you have multiple meetings around the region, so...
And I just have to check, okay.
I told you both days at this point will wide open for me.
You're looking at what date, 22nd?
February 23rd, 24th, I could do the 22nd too.
Either one, no, wait, what we have?
Christie gave me about 10 dates, but my feeling was, let's nail her down and get it done sooner than later.
I don't have the date of the February Wetmore meeting, is that the 15th or the 22nd?
It's the 21st.
21st, okay, so we're clear.
So...
You just send them an email, ain't it?
I mean, right now, before I put anything else in, I'm okay with any day.
Okay, do you want, okay, 23rd or 24th, and I'll just let Christie know, we'll do eight to noon, or we'll do like one to...
Either way.
That's what works best for you, afternoon better for you?
Afternoon would probably, actually, if we could, I'd prefer to do the 23rd, if possible.
23rd, I will let Christie know, we'll do it on the 23rd. Yeah, she's over there to meeting now.
Do you like the afternoon or morning more?
Afternoon.
Okay, like one to five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And you'll confirm that with us?
Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll probably do it over at the SAR building. Yep, I will confirm that with you, I'll get her now. So we'll table that MOU and we'll get this set.
Okay, now that was a one o'clock.
One o'clock, the 23rd. Yeah, one to five.
And I will try to attend it, just to never rush to refresh.
And I'm gonna attend, because even though I'm not an elected official, I could potentially have to teach the course someday.
An elected official of country, you would say, wouldn't you?
Yeah, and there's a real nice little handout, a little pocketbook guide that comes with it. That, you know, that I've been referencing that guide quite a bit.
Thank you for doing this. Appreciate you.
To motion to table the MOU, would it come up as all business?
I don't know, because the other one, we motioned to table the...
Actually, the previous one is a motion to reschedule. There needs to be a motion to table this, since it was on the agenda, if you want to follow Robert's Rules of Order, which we learned the other day. So why don't I just go ahead and let's do it officially. I'll make a motion that we table the MOU agreement between the school and the county regarding evacuation plans until they finalize what they would like, and then we'll review it at that time.
Okay.
I'll second that, motion is stated.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pro, same sign, motion carried.
And I will email you and point the draft as soon as I get the next draft from them.
I didn't put a date on it, so when they're ready, we'll come back.
Okay, I'm gonna photocopy this and give this back to you.
You can have it, I, the first page of it I wrote to be revised, so I just had it in my folder.
So we'll wait for the revision.
Unless you want front page two.
Wait for the revision.
I don't think, I can at least download it.
Okay, let's go on to the COOP plan.
COOP, and that stands for Continuity of Operations Plan.
Is this it?
It looks like this on the front.
Let me see.
And what that is, is where we go.
I think, oh, I gave some hard copies out at the December 30th meeting. I probably didn't give you the entire plan to review yet. What I had given out was the tables that looked like this.
I just have the one table, I don't have anything else, I'm sorry.
The tables that I emailed to everybody were the lead departments, which most of the, you know, I got all the information back on who their department deputies and phone numbers are. I've got a couple of changes to incorporate, and I can...
Just let them look real quick.
I can get the whole thing out, what I'm really missing, yep, that's it. What I'm really needing help with is this alternate locations. So, you know, and Mike and I talked about this since December 30th. And there's a couple areas, you don't have a full copy, but Mike and Shannon did, and I'm not sure who I'll pick them up at...
Well, that whole thing needs to go to Donna, because she's the commissioner in charge of facilities.
Okay, so what I really, the piece that I'm really missing, you know, I presented it as a draft, obviously there's some holes. Mike Halpin and I talked, and in the Fremont County Plan, they had a section in here, and I'm gonna change this, but the, where, in the Fremont County Plan, they had a county administrator who did some guidance on facilities, and other ones, it was county, like, facilities manager. We don't have that, and so Mike is willing to kind of help be that piece, because he's already working on the evacuation. So part of the COOP plan would be if it's, say, a fire alarm or, you know, something to do with weather or something, you might just say, everybody go home today, that's the continuity plan, and Mike could make that call. That's the continuity plan, and Mike could make that call. But when you get into this table of alternate locations, that's where, okay, now we have a roof collapse because of heavy snow load. Where are we going? And I got a few suggestions from a couple of department heads. Everybody else pretty much said, you know, we have no clue. But the plan, we need a plan. It doesn't mean we can't deviate from the plan, but we need a plan, so I need to come up with alternate locations for everybody. So I brought this to the CES meeting, which was the Customer Emergency Services meeting where you get together once a month, fire, EMS, you know, clinic.
So we had Tuesday.
Right.
And you were busy, because you're on the committee.
Right. So at Tuesday's meeting, Bob suggested that I bring this alternate location piece to you as a board instead of asking the folks at the CES meeting, you know, and then randomly, you know, plugging some things in. And again, like, just like with the evacuation plan, the school can be our main plan, but, you know, there's a difference if it's a fire in October or a fire in July, because there's no school. So the same thing, you know, we can't really say we're going to go over to the Veterans Agency if they don't, you know. And the one good thing about, we're not all in the same building, so, you know, I don't think we're going to see a disaster hit all three buildings, but the same is true with the towns. They really need to have a plan, and, and, so part of it talks about your go-kit and grabbing, grabbing stuff, and like with emergency management, I have to be able to go and take the EOC to fire or to Wetmore or wherever. But likewise, if, you know, if there's a pipe break upstairs, it might only affect the downstairs here. But, you know, they need those plans. So where do we go for an alternate location? And once I kind of fill in these, I think we're ready for a full review of it, and then there is a review chart in the front, and I'll send you the whole thing and, and try to get it adopted, and then we can certainly start tweaking it. Most of the plans I've got to get done, kind of the rule of thumb from the academy is if they're 90% done, you get them signed off, and you start doing annual reviews in the first quarter, and you update them because you're never going to have perfection.
I mean, I don't have that whole package, so I just have this.
And I'll get it to you.
So can I ask, in order to determine an alternate location, wouldn't we have to know what the specific needs of these departments were in order to place them?
Well, some of them, right, you know, GIS is going to need to either remove its plotter and its equipment.
Right, right.
Or, or we just have to, as an example, in GIS, we may have to go to Fremont County because that, there should be equipment that's been damaged.
And I didn't include the courts on here?
See, but those, we come into here, as I look at these, Donna, these are places that, where do you go tomorrow morning?
Yeah.
And, and one place that is attractive to us and we need to think about is the rodeo building out there. Because we do have very high-speed internet and communications into that building as a result of the Junkins fire.
Yeah, they put in 12, 12 lines. We got 36 pair for 36 phones.
So immediately, that lets our people plug into stuff.
Right.
And, and now you need tables and chairs and partitions, and you can rent all that, and you can figure out what you need to do, but you need at least a plan.
And, and with that fire, with the Junkins fire, I wanted to sit with you at some point and the commissioners, because I have the, the indoor arena, and I also have the ranch house, and there, they've got telephone access and all that, so that could be an alternative depending on what your needs are.
And I'm going to go meet with Robin upstairs, but that one is ESF 11, I think, and Robin's going to take over the ag resources appendix.
Back up a minute. Tell them what ESF is.
They are your emergency support functions, and we have 16 of them in our, in our draft plan. So finance is one, and I don't have a memory.
Each, each of them is a specific area, and she's referring to one's part of that master plan, which is this.
Yeah, so there is a piece on mass care, which is EFS, ESF 6. That's your, your evacuations and your housing, but then the ag piece of that is 11, and Sin Williams, Robin Young, Paul Sage, and one other individual attended a training in Pueblo County last week. And Robin, we're going to go meet today, but she's helping me with some fire stuff, but she's willing to write that ag piece, and so there's a credentialing process and, and a process to go through, but we do have an old CART team in place, which is Community Animal Response Team, and it was called CART before anything else was called CART. And there she is.
Okay.
So, um-
We were talking about you.
Yeah. But, but I'm sure Robin would love to have that be part of the plan and, and the, you know, the saddle club. I mean, part of the saddle club, the problem with the, on a small fire, it's great to have all your animals there, and we didn't have a big need, but when you've got 911-plus firefighters in camp, probably not the best place to be bringing 100 animals to, too. And you've got large animals and small animals.
Okay.
But yeah, there's, I'm going to be planning my-
But the chances of us having to move the courthouse the same time we have a major fire are very small.
Exactly. I, I agree.
They wouldn't conflict, but the odds would be low.
Yeah. And I would say there's some, like, because of the radio tower, I would say dispatch would probably want to go to search and rescue because they've got the next best radio facilities or the fire station. So some of those, you probably need to look at your best-
Would you elaborate on dispatch just a minute from yesterday?
The, in general, or?
Well, we're talking about what you found on the San Luis Valley and why we need a second source for emergency dispatch.
Um, yeah, okay, so it's statutory requirements, and I'm going to go through the state statutes based on the meeting, that we have a backup P-SAP, which is your public service. Help me out, Bob, we looked it up. Something Communications, Public Safety.
P-SAP is the primary, I got it, I got it.
I know you wrote it down. See, I Googled it. Siri, what is P-SAP? This one doesn't know Siri. But you do have to-
It is the Public Safety Answering Point.
Answering, thank you.
Public, how that fits in an acronym, I don't know, but.
So that's your, your, your dispatch system is your P-SAP.
That's what a 911 goes.
So we do have to have a backup. Buck's position, when I talked to him after the meeting, is you want your backup P-SAP to be a number of miles away. You don't want it right next door. So he may have a point on that, and he's going to kind of take the lead to see if we would have that, but regardless, the search and rescue building does have 800 and VHF, and even if they didn't have a whole P-SAP center right there, Buck's going to look into that as far as the backup P-SAP, and I know, I know CenturyLink's had lines dug up down there on Fourth Street before, but if that line goes down, then is Fremont County answering when somebody calls 911? And, and so I think Buck is going to look to a backup system, being in Fremont County or Pueblo County, for dispatch. That doesn't mean that our dispatchers would get in the car and drive down there. They may still have to bring records and things over to search and rescue and at least monitor. I don't, I don't know. But we, you know, this is the big thing I'm missing here, and then I'll send the whole draft out, so if you-
Do you sleep at night?
Not lately. Not lately.
We have spent lots and lots of hours digging.
Yeah.
Been a whole year just about.
Yeah, I have, I have been working on my time blocking a little bit better, coming to work a little later in the morning because I get home and I, I have no life right now. This is good.
But this is something that we need to, to figure out.
We need to address, yeah.
Right.
Just another one of those things that's been there. As an example, the, basically, the 615 or OZ is not an option because we have, we have the veteran service option.
And I think, and, and coroner's there already, so coroner, we could probably move to SAR easy enough. Assessor will, will change them. And the, the West Cliff or Wetmore Community Center?
We need something else, haven't you yet?
I don't think so. I'll cut audio. Are you going to be there? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I don't know that library would let us use their facilities. I think fire would probably be a good place for some folks. GIS, he might be going to Fremont County or Pueblo County.
Now, there's another, excuse me for interrupting, but we use the fire department as our emergency operations center. And after the second day, it was becoming nervous about them being down there and wanting us out, and, and that's why we moved out of there.
Yeah, we, we ended up moving out at 4:00 PM on Friday, so we stayed there for a full five days, and I think some of the successes were being a joint ICP, EOC, Incident Command Post, Emergency Operations Center. And if I, if I speak too much acronies after a year, then just stop me and say, what does that mean?
I'm going to zap you with a cover.
Another thing we need, as an aside to that, though, we need some type of security on who goes in there, because we got it set, like, the second, my third day, but the first day, we had all kinds of people wandering through, looking at stuff.
We had roadblocks.
And, and stuff that people from the community had no business being in that operations center.
I guess that's why I was wondering if that group using the kitchen was okay to be there using the kitchen.
Yeah. Michelle Tillison runs the Wet Mountain Fire Auxiliary, so we're working with her, and Chuck, or Ted Wigan, is taking over the MRC from Gail. So Paul Sage, Michelle, and we're-
MRC.
Medical Reserve Corps. And they pretty much run the nine health fair. They set up COTS, run the evacuation centers.
They're the ones that run the evacuation.
And they ran all the spoiled food and the DAC, you know, just like Aguilar just had that big-
She was the one that assisted.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, I, I think that's the brainchild of Gail, so I'm not sure, but that's hopefully something your new public health nurse will make sure they keep running.
So would it be best if we generated an email to the, these offices, asking what their needs are for an emergency evacuation? And then we'll try to figure out where we can go to meet those needs? Does that be the?
Well-
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'm asking that because I just sat with Chuck, okay?
Right.
And he's responsible for taking certain backups off-location.
Right.
Well, okay, so if your building, you can't use it, what the heck are you going to continue with the next day somewhere?
Yeah. A lot of stuff is on the cloud, so.
Well, but there, again, you can survive without it. We burned a courthouse down in Douglas County when I was there, and it disrupted operations, but they lost everything. And this was 25 years ago. Well, county functions did get located all over town, and you started with where you were, and we kept adding to it till they got back to full capacity.
I, I sent an email out to everybody, and this is what I got, so.
Do we need, do we need?
I didn't ask for very specific, you know, what are your needs? That, a department head should know what their needs are, and they should contact the agencies and say, if I had this, you know, I think that's, and, and I can't really push that because they're not my department, so if you wanted to look at it from that perspective, I mean, I, I think a department head has the responsibility, and I could send the whole plan out to them to start reading.
How about, how about if, Donna, you work with her because she's in charge of facilities, and all of these fall under facilities?
Right. And I know, for instance, speaking to Donna Hobby, she can run payroll from home if she needed to, and Chuck's got her set up on that, and, you know, and obviously, that's probably one of the most important functions, is paying the bills and making payroll.
Right, right.
But, you know, depending on the emergencies, some folks may have a long weekend.
And I'm just saying, with sitting with him, that's why we're going to have a workshop with us.
Okay.
There are some things that I see that need to be addressed.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a concern there.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make you my point of contact, and I'll send you the whole plan. I'll make the updates, and then if, you know, the big thing is if we can adopt it in first quarter, I think we should.
Okay.
Even if it's not 100% perfect, there's a schedule of changes in there, and it should be an annual review out to department heads.
Now, we have one other item, I think, along the same line, and that's an emergency management plan.
Mm-hmm. I would like to get it adopted in first quarter.
That has to be done by the 15th of March, doesn't it?
I think it's something like that, yeah. I need to have it.
Because we've been extended and extended, and now we're to the end of the line, and, and it's gone from, from us to the state, and now it's at the federal FEMA.
Oh, you're talking about the hazard mitigation point.
Hazard mitigation point.
Yeah.
And then, but that's got a finite deadline we have to get out.
Right. So-
So do you have to be the watchdog on that to make sure it's back here by the 15th?
Yeah. It's, uh, it went to FEMA December 30th, and they, FEMA has 45 days. The state finally pushed it ahead for payment, so it's finally at the state review, but I have some of those reimbursement requests that are over 300 days old. We're not getting what we thought back because of the way it was advertised. We're, we're eligible for about $44,000 of the almost $50,000 in reimbursement, but the in-kind was not as good as we thought. And then the state did advance it for payment with the caveat that the RFP process was not very well documented on the, and I don't remember the acronyms, but on the minority and the women's bidder, they gave it to a woman-owned company, and she was the highest bid, but because the state's been through some pretty ugly audits here recently, they sent the caveat that if you could find something to show that the committee that sent this out for RFP did a better job, then you should upload, you have to upload all these documents to the state system. I can't find anything, and, and that was before my time, but this, yeah, this grant has been extended once. The hard deadline is March 1st. I'm trying to get both towns to approve it. It may not be here for the February meetings. I'm on the agenda for both February meetings and both March meetings for the towns.
Shannon?
And are you done with West Cliff, or are you still?
No, I'm just-
Sure. I want to interrupt just a second. We talked about the surcharge for 911.
Yeah.
And does that have to be approved by the town? Each town to approve that? How do we, because there was some-
Yeah, you know, that's, I, I don't want, I can't speak to that. We would have to, we'd have to-
Okay, well, you and I can visit, so.
Yeah, we have to do some research on it. I don't know, I honestly don't know.
Okay.
Cause I don't, I don't sit on the committee normally.
I know, but we.
Try to.
But you and I got to make it work.
No, no, I, I agree, that's, but that's why I can't answer because I'm not used, but I can do some research and find out.
Let me know.
Send that to Donna.
I would love to, I would love the extra.
What word?
If you would like to proof everything I do.
What this was, I just asked him in our E911 meeting yesterday. We, was it just yesterday, day before yesterday?
Wednesday.
Whenever it was.
Tuesday.
Anyway.
Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, you're right, Wednesday.
We're raising the cost from a dollar and a quarter to a dollar 75 for reimbursement for phone call, for 911 phone calls. And there's some question as well, did the county, did the city have to vote on it and approve it and so forth? But the reason we're doing this is that we need more money for our 911 system.
And I would.
Cause it's going to have to be upgraded.
I would add to that, um, you know.
Are you with her?
Is it Wanda, that's the West Cliff representative? She felt that, um, because it's a utility, a rate, it's, you're, they're going to request the Public Utilities Commission allow a rate increase and that it would.
Is that a table issue? Does that have to go to the voters? Pardon me?
Not sure.
Table issue?
They're, they're researching it though.
I think it's just like, I think it's just like when Black Hills raised.
Chuck, Chuck was going to look.
It goes to PUC and it doesn't have a.
Be the best person to know that.
He said he was going to look.
One of the issues we may run into is the financials there. Making sure, you know, what we're, if we do take this, you know, and it gets out to the public, that we want a tax increase on their phone bills. But we don't have good records of where that money comes from or how we spend it.
Actually, it's just because there's so many people and I'm one of them. I didn't know this until we had the meeting. If you have a phone from Pennsylvania, that money's going to Pennsylvania, it's not coming here.
Probably is, so.
So it's a whole information process that probably has.
But I, I'm sorry, I, I got.
No, no problem, no worries, no worries. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a great day.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, that's all right, that's all right.
Okay.
So I'll work with Donna on the coop. I'll forward a copy to Jay. I'll give you the whole copy too, Bob. And, um, yeah. And, uh, and I, I apologize for stepping out of my lane, um, at the E911 meeting, trying to push for those financials and stuff. That's something the board's going to have to, um, handle.
You were my representative.
Well, I apologize to Chuck too, and I'm going to, to the rest of the group, but, um, Chuck felt I didn't owe anybody an apology, but, um, it's.
Okay.
Could be done.
Could we have a small break?
I was gonna, I was just going to ask if there's anything else.
On your way.
That concludes this portion. Uh, at this time, we still have the executive session to go through. Would the commissioners like to have a recess for an hour? Or do we want to come back in 10 minutes? What would be the place?
I would like, I suggest you come back in 10 minutes.
10 minutes?
Five minutes, whatever.
Whatever. Five minutes, good.
Because we're probably at 45 minutes ahead of schedule.
Yeah, I just assume keep going if.
Let's have it just finished, I got stuff to say.
Okay, well, please note that we are going into recess at 12 o'clock and we will reconvene at 12:10. Please, Board of County Commissioners, back into session again. It is 12:10. And, uh, an additional item I would like us to talk about right now is the, uh, when we talked about it earlier in the meeting today, is the request for proposal. And this is an example of one that would go to, uh, to one firm. I think what we need to look this over. And then we also need to see if we have identified what we need back here.
This is from the last one, so we just.
This will have to be rewritten from.
Yes, yes. It'll, it'll have to be rewritten completely because we have different things we're looking for.
Suspicions.
So is this something we want to look at now? Do you want to take it and think about it?
I would, if I may, I would suggest folks just do it now.
Well, that was kind of what my, what my hope was. Okay, I think the first thing we need to look at, the letter is, uh, I don't see anything in here. We have to identify some deadlines. But, uh.
The deadline is in the, our, the actual RFP, so, on the second page. So, I don't.
This says May 17, 2016.
This is from last year's underfunded. I just gave it to you as an example and we're just going to have to like cross stuff out and put new stuff in, so.
See, this is what we did for the planning grant that we got, that we've now used up. Now we can do something like this for the.
Yeah.
Construction.
We have to come up with a new one for this. But this is like a template for you, so.
Identify the current facilities and deficiencies. We've already identified those, so do we want to say, um.
Do we need to review them? The reason I'm asking is because I wasn't part of the process. I'm thinking about, um.
You have a copy of this report.
I have this?
Of the.
Oh, a back.
That was generated from this.
Yes, yes. Got the same back.
And in that report, they identified what their conditions and deficiencies were. Now we need to request planning. Uh, let's grab the wet more. Can we use any one? And see what all we had in there from that language? See, it, we're requesting the, the drafting of information of, of, uh. This is a request for a proposal and this is what we want in it as a product. I don't think we need to do anything with the, the second one. Oh. Or we can?
I, I think you do need to because I'm just going to refer to my discussion with IT. And looking at the space that's there, I know this is for a courthouse, but I don't know, are we incorporating just that side?
That's all we have.
Plus our entrance, because that was part of it.
Part of it. This will have nothing, this will have no impact on any county offices.
Anything else.
Except for, that's it. When we did this, we, this is why we had a process for building a new courthouse, or building a new county administration building, or remodeling this to meet the needs. So that's why we interviewed the personnel, incorporate their comments into the planning process. Uh, we may want to, to be a little more specific there. My bad.
It, if, I guess to save county funds, I guess what I'm looking at is if we're looking at that side and we only have so much space. I guess I'm asking, did, did you receive any feedback from information technology on space? And I guess, um, sometimes you need, um, outside space.
As they, they interviewed Chuck.
Yeah.
In the process and whatever responses he made, they incorporated into the report.
Okay.
And most of these were very brief. If we look, and I don't have a copy of that report with me, but they, in there, they talk about the needs assessment of, of how much each office had, what they were going to need for future space, for future expansion to like the clerk's office, if they were going to be at six or seven clerks down the road, some deputies, what were they going to need?
Okay.
And that, but in this case, interview personnel, incorporate their comments into the planning process. This would be, I don't know. Mike is a part of it, a very integral part of it. To a degree Shannon is, but more importantly, the court liaison person would be. Identify space needs, the judicial facility, they did that. They identified the holding facility. They, uh, the courthouse facilities, I think here we were talking about the offices, not the courtroom facilities. See if we're compliant. We have that in that report because we have to remodel each bathroom. Analyze the placement of elevator, that is in the report. And then prepare options for future facility needs and potential expansion. We don't need options for that, but we need to have options, planning options for the remodeling, I think. And then the needs assessment and planning deadline. Uh, this was the one that we had to, we got it in September and now October the grant had to go back in. I think we need to, the needs assessment, that, we've already done the assessment. We just, all of this is going to be planning the, the, I'm trying to think of the right word. It's the architectural drawings. It's not the final detailed architectural drawings, but it is, it's that preliminary stuff.
Preliminary, because he was the gentleman that was here doing the presentation. I think Jay and I were in attendance in that meeting. Just asking questions even about how the current entrance would be. Those aren't set in concrete.
No.
So that needs to be reviewed.
That's all stuff we'll, we'll talk about. And we are, have expanded it, uh, at least in, in a general sense. Well, I think we need to expand it to include a basement under the new addition. And that the elevator will go from the basement up. And the reason for that is that the basement will function as a secondary courtroom. Because of the load that we already have in this, in our primary courtroom. That's a need, I think, that we have now. It's going to add about. Oh, God. I've forgotten. It's, it's, it's about $200 a foot. I think you only add like 500,000 to the cost of the project. But it's a lot cheaper to put the basement under now for growth and development down the road than it is to try to continue. If we were, it's cheaper to build a basement now than it is to build.
On top.
On top or, or extend out.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't have a copy of that report.
I don't have it linked.
Do you have a copy of that courthouse report that we passed them all out? They've all disappeared?
Yes.
Well, he might, he might have the words in that report that I'm looking for. Does this make sense, Jay?
Yeah, I mean, we need to assess what it is. We're asking you to make a bid. You need to tell them what we need them to bid on. I mean, this was great for the preliminary assessment. And, and some of it may apply, but I think we need to.
So I would like the, I think the planning deadline, the product deadline should be middle of the summer. So we have more time. Uh, I also think we need to have some public hearings. A workshop on the courthouse. Uh, we made the decision to go with the remodel. That really wasn't a formal decision. It was kind of made by, by Kit and Mike and, I mean, by Lynn and Mike. But we felt we couldn't afford a 5,000, a $5 million or $6 million budget at this time. Uh, it was just too many dollars to spend.
All of my copies seem to have disappeared, so.
Okay.
I don't know where they went. I thought I had one in my file cabinet, but, or where it went.
See if I've got Anderson and Hollis in here.
Oh, I have one, well, I have one online.
I just want to make sure we're being inclusive of everything and I'm, I'm not sure that I know that.
I don't have Anderson and Hollis here, I just.
What do we actually have now? We have a needs assessment.
We have the, this is, all we have is the chest. We did a study. We measured the building, everything, and these are the needs that you have.
Okay.
And they gave us three options in that report. One with the most detail was the remodeling of the courtroom and building an addition on, for only court facilities attached to this building. The second was in a general planning session of building a new courthouse. And the third was building a new judicial center.
Got you.
And that courthouse, I believe, was about five and a half million and the judicial center was pretty close to 7 million. So it's a all.
So option one is obviously.
Options right now, option one, what we can afford.
1.5.
That option one is and then send it out to whoever to see if they can come up with how we can put that plan into operation.
May I ask how long the assessment was for? What was the projected time period for this assessment?
25 years.
Thank you.
We felt that any improvement we'd made, the last time we built on there was about 25 years ago. And if we can reach 25 years into the future, we're putting our building in a position. Well, we didn't solve the issue of the lack of space. We're going to have to continue to address that as we go forward. We may end up moving some of the apartments. We may move, as the examples suggested, we move social services offsite so there's not a stigma. But there's also a suggestion we leave it here because you don't know if you're going to a social services or another office when you walk in the door. But those are issues that.
Okay.
That we'll be looking at. Do you have a number for Anderson, Hollis?
I do.
I'm sorry.
Smart thing to do at this point. Once we locate those three options, which is put one, the number one option onto this and then send it out.
The option will be for the remodeling of the courthouse.
Yeah, that's what I meant, the remodeling.
So state that.
Attached to this and send it out and I'll find.
I'm going to call Anderson, Hollis, which are the ones that generated the report for us. And ask them, if I can get ahold of somebody in the meantime, we'll see. Ask them.
If we're being inclusive.
I don't think they should even be part of it. I think we should just take option number one and send it out.
The option number one that we have is in that report that I gave you. I don't, I didn't bring, didn't even think about bringing my.
No, 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 and that's okay. I'm just talking about the rest of this. Are we thinking of everything that we should be?
Well, I think in option one, it will identify that, of course, but let me reach behind you here. Sit down, you're fine, I'm just going to bring the phone over.
I'm going to see if I can pass the test.
Okay.
Brenda's been teespring, I use this phone. Okay.
And it's, um.
Pushed this down. And then I pushed nine down. And I got a dollar. Hey, you saved me. I was trying to remember his name.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, Bob Katting and Custer County Commissioners, is Wells Squire there, please?
Uh, there was a lady that worked with him on, on the Custer County Courthouse project. All right. Holly, was that her name? Brenda?
I don't know. That doesn't sound familiar. That, that doesn't sound. Rebecca?
Rebecca.
Maybe.
Yep. Let the record show that I'm calling for Wells Squire. Uh, with the Anderson Hollis architects have prepared the last report for us on the courthouse space. I don't know if we need to give them two or three weeks, probably is sufficient. Let's bring in somebody.
Oh, man.
Hey Rebecca, Bob Katting, how are you today? Well, I'm doing well, I think. We're sitting down here scratching our heads and I need a little help from you. Okay, we're getting ready to, to send out an RFP for the next phase. But I need to know what we're asking for. Give me the right words. Just a second, I'm going to put you on speakerphone, just a minute. Can I push this button and then hang up?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
All right. I have with me, uh, Commissioner Donna Hood and Commissioner Jay Prince. And also have our county attorney, Clint Smith, and our clerk and recorder, and our administrative assistant. But the purpose of the call is that I'm, we're trying to write an RFP for the next phase. Uh, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to decide what, how, what questions do we need to ask?
All right. That's a complicated question. So I guess, um. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
First I would ask, um.
Let me ask you this. Would you rather think about this and send us an email?
That would, that would probably be better.
Okay.
Let me ask, um, first, is this for, um.
This is for the next.
What exactly are you, are you thinking for the next phase?
Yes, we, we did get that courthouse improvement grant for 145,000. And this is the RFP, so we can get something moving to get the, uh, to get this next phase underway.
Okay, so this would be the next phase for the existing courthouse, addressing some of the security and accessibility needs?
Well, we, yeah, you, you addressed those in the report that you sent to us. And now we're doing some planning and preliminary architecture work, is that right? Is that the next phase?
Yep.
And that's what I'm trying to get, the right words, so when we send out RFP, we have it, what we need to say.
Okay. All right. I, um, I'm going to have to think about that a little bit and get back to you. What, um, what's your timeline for this?
Uh, we would like to have something fairly soon. Uh, what do you think, colleagues?
Um, should she know that our decision is one of the three options, so she knows what direction to go?
Uh, this was Commissioner Hood, did you hear her question?
I did not.
Okay, uh, there were three options proposed and we're opting for the first option. So that would have to be referenced.
But that's the remodel.
The remodel.
Addition.
Okay. Does that, and I don't have the plans in front of me, did that include the addition or was that just the remodel of the existing?
No, that included the addition on the south side, which would have the holding cells, the reconfiguration of the courtroom, uh, some additional offices for the judges and attorneys.
Okay.
That was the one that you identified, I think, was about, uh, a million and a half or something. And then the other two options you offered to us was a new administrative building, which was about 5 million plus, or a new courthouse, which was 7 million. And the one we're pursuing is just the remodel of the existing facilities with the add-on.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, that helps.
Now, in addition, we, you and I talked earlier and Wells and I have too, but we'd like this to include, which we did in the initial evaluation, include a basement. And also we're looking at maybe even having to make that basement into a second courtroom.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. Were you thinking that this next phase is, um, do you want to, um, kind of split it up into, um, sort of a more schematic design phase?
Yes, I'm thinking of a, of a, of a planning phase to it that we fine tune that, uh, that I visualize whoever gets the bid coming in and offering us some options. We discuss through and, and work out what we think fits the best. And then after we decided that, also including in this phase then would be the preliminary architecture, uh, work for it.
Okay. So not quite going the whole way to construction documents?
Well, we've got 148, 144 to spend, so we want to go as far as we can. And I would assume we almost have to be at construction documents, with maybe some modifications, but basically construction documents, so we can, in a position then to bid the next step.
Okay. That's helpful.
I'd like to also add something, Rebecca. Because we're going to, um, present this probably in public forum, uh, that what's presented to us might be in a, um, PowerPoint document.
Okay. All right. So are you, as far as what you're looking for from us, are you looking kind of just some, some pointers on what to, what verb. some, some pointers on what to, what verbiage to include in the RFP?
Yes.
Right.
Or kind of the scope as well?
Right. Because that's what, what I'm wanting is what we need to include for the firm to be able to produce the, you know, incorporate the rest of the planning and incorporate the, the architecture work, yeah. I can build a barn, but I've never built a courthouse.
And they're not that much different.
We won't say anything about the Waste Management Association.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Okay, great, so let me, um, I'm gonna have to think about this for a minute and, um, talk to Wells. Would it be okay if I get back to you on Monday?
Oh, I think that would be fine, is that agree with you folks?
Sure.
Sure. I'd rather have Monday or Tuesday, I want you to have time to do it, so we're comfortable with what we've got.
Okay.
I wanna do it right and not forget something.
Sounds good. All right, I will think about this and, um, get something back to you by Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, just a second, uh, Jay, Commissioner Jay, do you have any comments, questions?
Nope, I appreciate your assistance in this. You can probably tell we're not all experts, and that's why we called you, so thanks for your help.
Of course.
Thank you, Rebecca. And Anderson, or, um, Wells has my email address, this is Brenda.
Okay.
So you can just get it to me, and then I'll get it to everyone else.
All right.
One other thing I would like to have, if there's, if it wouldn't cost you a lot, would be could we get maybe three or four more hard copies of your last report?
Sure.
It seemed that ours had walked out.
No problem.
Okay.
All right.
Well, you have a wonderful afternoon and have a great weekend.
You too, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Yeah, I had one in my file cabinet, and I thought I was keeping it, and I don't know what happened to it, so...
That's okay. Uh, we will then continue on as we discussed earlier for this request.
I agree.
All right, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, and help me, Mr. Smith, with the wording, we, we, we're going to be discussing personnel positions, open positions.
Correct, and so this will be, uh, executive session on the record, and we need to read that language.
Will we have anything to do with the, uh, legal, anything legal we need to talk about?
I don't believe that there's anything, any legal issues to be discussed.
Um, legal, uh...
I see your folder.
We have to open up another session with regards to the, um, email.
Yeah.
From the Tribune.
That'll be a separate.
Separate, okay.
I'm sorry, was there a motion?
No, I'm just getting ready to ask for what we need, so we need to, we need to make the motion to go into executive session, and then we adjourn, or we adjourn and go, I mean, we recess and then go to executive session?
That's correct.
You do the motion first, then you recess.
So I'll make a motion, or, let me rephrase it, I move that, um, we, the Board of County Commissioners go into, um, executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. I attest that, am I supposed to read this next year? Okay, so, um...
You make reference to the statute, there's to why, or what the authority is for going into executive session.
And, uh, the basis of the executive session is for personnel matters under Carter-Advisé statutes, twenty-four dash six, four oh two.
That's good, I think it's a paragraph four is there, but I'm not sure. For the purpose regarding personal matters.
Regarding personal matters, I said that.
Okay, the motion has been made according to Carter-Advisé statute twenty-four six four oh two. Commissioner Prince has made a motion to go into executive session, is there a second?
There is a second.
Commissioner Hood has made a second to go into executive session regarding personnel matters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I will declare the Board opposed and reconvene the meeting of the Board of Custer County Commissioners. I, I, I'm sorry, uh, I attest that I am the chairman of the Board of Custer County Commissioners, and confirm that the discussion remained on topic, and that no matters were adopted, and no actions or decisions were made.
And as the county attorney, I agree that the discussion stayed on topic, and there were no decisions made.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to reconvene the executive session for, uh, discussion of legal.
Should we not make a motion to approve what we did in executive session?
Yeah, let's get that taken care of. At this time, I will entertain any motions from the result of the executive session discussion.
I move that, um, we approve a job description for Road and Bridge supervisor, and that such description be disseminated to Custer County, the appropriate Custer County employees, and those who desire to apply for that job shall do so no later than four o'clock on January...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, thank you, by returning it to, I'll be, it's a correct?
What time, is it four o'clock?
I did say four o'clock.
I'll second the motion.
Do we need to identify what they need to do to apply for the job? Say that, that application can be made by resume, or are we requesting a resume and experience evaluation, or how we, I think we need to, I think we need to say what the vehicle that we're looking at.
How about if we, if I amend the motion to say pursuant, that the application we made pursuant to county policy?
All we have now is the, is a blank application policy, that I've done this, 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 and I would like to have a little more of what their experience, I've run a road crew, or I've run a crew, but what crews have you run? Does that make sense?
Yeah, my concern is, and we don't know who they are, but some people have already applied, and we don't know what they did and what they didn't, because we're gonna open this as a fair and equitable decision-making process.
So if there's, if we're asking something they didn't do, and they, this is successful.
Can redo it by Friday at four, is that what you're saying?
Well, this is, we're, we're opening it now, we've had some that have applied, not knowing what the actual application process is, and I, I guess I don't have any problem with asking them to submit a letter of interest and a short resume, or a letter of interest that, uh, highlighting their, their experiences, or something of that nature, because if they can't write a letter, that's a skill that's needed.
I'm fine. I'd like to amend the motion then, to include, um, that the process of submitting, um, an application will include a letter of, of interest and a, um, resume of job experience pertaining to, uh, the position.
Is there a second to the amendment?
There's a second to the amendment.
Now, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President, we will be voting on the amendment, and the motion to vote on the amendment was to, uh, request that application be made by a letter of interest accompanied by a resume of experiences. Is there any discussion on this? Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, oppose? Nay? No? Anamis decision? Motion passed.
I'd like to make a second motion regarding the position of our healthcare nurse, and that is that we, uh, address her job description in the same manner that the Road and Bridge's job description is.
Second motion.
Motion made, and seconded, to follow the same format for the, hold on just a second, to follow the same format as we followed in the Road and Bridge. Is that right?
It sounds good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, on our job description, our application?
There's a landfill.
I just pulled it out of his file, because I don't have it on file.
That's super, that's super. We're asking when they apply for the road boss, that they submit a letter of application and a short resume, will that work for you? We're looking at the people that are...
Four out of the six have done that.
That are already...
Yes.
Uh, and, they've already, we already have a, the initial application information, because we're looking at current county employees.
The only reason I gave him the application part was, and it's odd, it's just me, because I wanted the background check, so I could rerun that, if it's somebody who's been there a long time, that a lot of things could have happened in ten years, or what happened.
But we can have that standard one, that's what you gave him, was the standard one. Is there any problem that you see that we asked that they submit a letter and a, and a resume with that?
Oh, no, that's more, more information.
That's what we're, we're asking.
So can I ask the ones that have not, but already submitted something, that we go back to them, and please ask them to, thank you very much.
Um, not having read the landfill supervisor job description, um, I would just like us to be able to review that and make sure that, going forward with any new positions, that we're looking at having the same, um, dynamics in the job description. Let me, let me make copies for everybody on that one.
That's all I needed, I just wanna be sure we were okay with you from the...
Unless I had been in on the hiring process, I have not written a job description, so that's why there's a lot that had, you can tell where we had turnover, but we're just gonna have that prior.
And that's what we feel we need to start to do as a board, is to identify those positions. I like the, you know, we've gone over the, the nurse one, but we wanna see kinda like the format we laid out for the road bosses, it's very similar, but, so we have each of them kinda similar.
We just made some modifications in the...
As an example, we, among the responsibilities, we comply with the policy manual of the Custer County. And, just something like that, the, the, other reasonable actions, or other reasonable activities assigned by the Board of County Commissioners.
Well, and, you know, on a few, I invoked other duties as assigned, and somehow most of the time that didn't fly, or something.
Okay.
Well, I think as we, as we go forth, if we already have someone in position, we can't fire them because they didn't do it. But as we open the positions up for new hires, then I think at that time, we can certainly say that if we have something else, let's, as an example, there's nothing in Road and Bridge that says what the Road and Bridge has to do during a fire. So we would assign, I mean, we have plans and stuff in our emergency operations, but it's not spelled out in their job descriptions.
But, but you can always modify your job descriptions according to your current needs. Some of these haven't been looked at for years, so...
Yeah, and, and times change, I mean, one thing, it could say that you were doing data entry, and that is no longer that position, that...
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and we'll have them to you by four o'clock, January the twenty-seventh?
The job description, or I...
The applications.
On there, okay.
And what we're gonna do, she's gonna send it out to the, to the road people email, and I'll meet with them at seven o'clock Monday morning.
The twenty's...
That's a week from today, is that reasonable time?
Yeah, fine. Now, you should send it to the local, you came in, yeah, so, yeah.
But that'll work for you, okay. It don't, it won't, say.
No, I, I'm good.
Okay. I just don't want, my concern is that we don't have a bunch extra for you as you finish up your year-end activity, I mean, your monthly activity.
And when would you be starting to schedule the interviews?
Well...
That's the only timeframe that I just need, that little bit of time to verify information.
I don't think realistically we can interview until probably after our January meeting.
February.
February meeting, which would be the seventh and eighth, sixth and seventh?
Seventh and eighth.
Seventh and eighth.
Is that enough time?
And for me, yes.
How much, yeah, how much time do you need to put it together? Three, four days, five days?
And I can, I can make all that happen, that part's not a problem. Um, I would suggest when the letter goes out, that you tell them when the interviews will be scheduled, so they can plan their life accordingly, if, if there's shift, if there's seven guys coming in, if they do have a road crew, if there's a snow, you know, kinda say, you know, we want the deadline is the twenty-seventh, and we will tentatively schedule the interviews at eighth or the tenth from nine to four, or something, so they could figure out how they're going to all...
And subject to change based on work schedules and road emergencies.
And that way, everybody would, they wouldn't be stunned when, oh...
Okay.
It would be totally inappropriate to say, I can't interview you because you're working during the time we're interviewing, that we won't do.
On there, but, but for my part, it's, it should be easy.
Okay.
Okay.
And if you'll send me that as well, so I know the time, so yes, I'll be good.
So we're gonna do the interviews when? The tenth? Ninth?
Can you tell me?
Brent, what do you suggest?
Of, of mine right now, I'm going to say that we have everyone that we're going to have, I, I think, I believe, so, everyone that's called me has came and picked out, with the exception of one, and that was the one that came this way.
That's a Friday, Friday the tenth.
So we do this on Friday the tenth, and then we have our next meeting, that next Wednesday in Wetmore?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
No, the twenty-first in Wetmore.
Twenty-first, yeah.
So we're still eleven days out.
Yeah. So, I have a question, um, is the interview session, like, is it a meeting, and then you go into executive session for the interviews, and then you come out, and...
What did we do when we hired veteran service officer?
I posted, I would, I would just post it as a meeting on the door, so you weren't meeting secretly, but the door was closed, because it was interviews, and then we posted that the interview, that we had interviews going on.
Counselor, we have to go into executive session for that then, right?
It should be an executive session, yes.
And then we go into executive session for the interviews?
And we can schedule, like, the afternoon after the regular meeting, we can have executive session in the afternoon, if you wanna do it that way.
You mean on the, on the, um...
On the eighth.
Seventh or, or the eighth?
What day? Seventh or eighth, I could tell.
Now, do we wanna interview everybody that applied, or do we wanna interview our top applicants?
Well, and it's, you may...
Maybe the workshop to...
Yeah, but a workshop is open to the public.
Right, so that's an executive session. It's an executive session.
Ordinarily, I make copies of all of it besides their private information, and make it available to you to give me your top choices, and you can just pick them up at my office or release them there. And that way, you can take them home and, and read through and, and say, you know, three of the six, all six, and put them in order, and then if all, and then you bring the yours, and it has your one, two, three, or your four, and the same, and, and we pick from there.
Is that an executive session, though? The pick is an executive session?
Actually, you discuss it, and then you come out and vote on it formally, on the record, but you can kinda discuss and have an informal understanding of what your preferences are, but you need to make your vote in an open session, yes.
Because the Board of County Commissioners effectively acting as a search and screen committee.
Yes.
So we each evaluate those six applications on one through six.
And they are all six really strong.
And then we'll come through there, and, and, what I'm trying to say, Bob was ranked one on this list, and I was ranked five over here, and I was ranked three over here, that means that's five and three, that's nine points.
Right, and I, I...
And we, we go across and add up, and then whoever, those three least number of points would be the three that we would interview, unless we decide we want to interview more. Do you see where I'm going with that? Kind of like a call.
Usually ordinarily, that would, it's never a choice, you, I have never had it where it was anything but the, the strong three or four, and it was always unanimous, maybe one and two were swapped, and three and four, but it's always been really, they just really seem to, to stand out.
Okay.
And that's how we did it also when we hired Cindy.
Okay, I'm just looking at the time, so we have about ten minutes.
So, is that, that's it, okay, I, um... We recess, we're done voting, right? Okay, I will recess the Board of County Commissioners at 1:35 PM. And I...
To legal advice.
I will second that motion citing the CRS 24-6402 regarding 4-B.
Okay. Commissioner Prince has made a motion and seconded by Commissioner Hood to go into executive session citing Colorado Vice Statute 24-6402 regarding legal advice. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, we will now go into... At this time, I will reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting on January the 20th, 2017. Commissioner Prince made a motion seconded by Commissioner Hood to go into executive session regarding CSR 24-16402. And then Commissioner Prince made a motion seconded by Commissioner Hood to go back into regular session. I attest that I am the chairman of the Custer County Board of Commissioners and confirm that discussion remained on topic, that no matters were adopted and no actions or decisions were made. Counselor?
That's a correct statement, and now I can stick it for the record, we did discuss the, an email demand for response to certain questions from the Wet Mountain Tribune, we discussed that. No decisions were made in executive session, and we stayed on topic the entire time.
Is there other business to come to forward at this time?
Well, we need to... Okay, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that the response to the inquiry by the Wet Mountain Tribune prepared by Clint Smith be approved. And that this board authorizes Mr. Smith to go ahead and send that response in our behalf.
Is there a second?
I would just like to add that we stay within the requested time constraints according to that email. And I would make a second.
Do you agree as a...
I think it's fine, yes, I accept that.
Motion has been made and seconded to send it out to the Tribune in response to the inquiry. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
Okay, I'll give this right out to Brenda with changes on it, and we can get it out today.
And at this time, we do have a couple of items left for signature. I recognize we have some time constraints. Would you like to come back, Commissioner Prince, and sign these maybe tomorrow, or Monday?
I'll sign them right now.
Well, Monday will be fine if you want to.
It'll be okay, let me do them now and I'll get it done, if that's okay.
I won't be able to get them out into the mail until Monday probably anyway.
I'll come back Monday if I have them.
Would you like to sign them? At this time, I'll adjourn the Board of County Commissioners and we will finish signing the correspondence. Sufficiency, Counselor? Meeting adjourned at 1:50 PM. Thank you.